All right, well, good evening Placerville and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. Will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I, oh, there we go, there's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which is stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Regina for getting the flag up there. Okay, let's go ahead, we have a full meeting tonight, lots of items, so let's go ahead and get started. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Mayor Sargasa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yep.
Councilmember Akuna.
Here.
Councilmember Brawley.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Okay, quorum is established, thank you. Moving on then to item three, item three announcements and presentations to the public. And item 3.1 is acknowledge and file the annual financial report and independent auditors report for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And Mr. Warren has this for us this evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we have Vanessa Burke CPA from Boomer to protect your financial statements in your audit report. So with that, I'll hand it over to Vanessa.
Good evening Vanessa.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council and Dave, and I'm assuming we would have citizens online tonight watching. So it's a pleasure to be here in front of you tonight to present the audit results for June 30th of 2019. As you know, we normally do this a little earlier in the year with you, the council. I know when I was there last year, it was early springtime, but with COVID-19 impacting everybody, we had wrapped up some of our audit and there were actual extensions that were given on filing financial reports and things like that this year. So we were grateful that the federal government allowed us the option, the option to do that. And actually, I'm going to need to share my screen here. So Dave, I'm going to go ahead and take over it. Can everybody see my screen with the presentation in front of you?
Yes.
I can.
Okay, excellent. So I'm going to go ahead and get right into this. You know, I would anticipate, really, we are adjusting, I think, as everybody to the new normal. We would anticipate that our new year starting up and getting through the process. We're actually already working remotely on many of our cities as we're getting into their 2020 audits for internal controls and all of that. And I can answer any questions as to that impact. Really been somewhat transparent for us because we are already working, you know, we already work remotely when we're at your client site. And so now it's just a matter of how we're going to stage that for the next year. With that said, I'm going to go through my agenda here. Part of our responsibility as your auditors is to discuss with you what our scope of work was this year, the timing of that, which we just talked about, any annual required communications under our professional standards, the results of our audit. We do add in here a quick overview of the financial statements. I know you've had that in your possession for some time. We'll talk about key financial indicators and pension and OPEB information for the city. And then open it up to questions at the end. So our work, and I'm getting a little bit of reverb here, I'm not sure why, but our scope of work for the city is to complete essentially three audits, two audits and one agreed upon procedures for you. The first is the financial statement audit, which is an annual financial report. And that audit, you know, possesses the full entity on a, both your governmental activities and your business type activities for the full primary government. And so we do render an opinion on the financial statement audit. We also audit your federal expenditures that you incur during the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2019. And that's because you're spending greater than $750,000 in federal award programs, you know, significantly more than that. And so we go through the process of identifying which federal awards need to be audited as part of the compliance supplement and uniform guidance and perform our audits in accordance with the uniform guidance, yellow book and the yellow book and generally accepted auditing standards. The third report we render to you is certain agreed upon procedures that we're required to perform related to the GAN limit. You may be familiar with the GAN limit. You typically pass out as part of your budget process. And that's looking at the computation and the calculation of the GAN limit. And that those computations and supporting schedules were prepared appropriately and accurately. As part of our professional standards, we are members of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And those standards require that we communicate to you certain required communications, at least annually, as part of our contract with you. And those standards are pretty specific as to what, what we need to do, scope of work, which we just talked about, timing of the audit, which generally for most audits lasts about six months. You know, you get at the end of June, you close your books. We come in after that and it generally is about a six month process. This one's been a little lengthier just because of COVID and the allowed delays from COVID. And the city has had to handle all the responses related to that. And, and so we, you know, there's nothing significant about this coming before you at this timeframe. It's just been a very unusual year and anomaly. We do need to discuss with you those charged with governance, any significant findings from the audit, any significant accounting policies, significant estimates used in the financial statements and any significant disclosures that are in there. So I put those on the slides here for ease of use. If you were to pour through the, the, the annual financial statements and look at where significant estimates and judgments are made, they would be in the following areas. One, you have a sizable investment portfolio. And so as you know, investments are subject to fair value adjustments. And we look at those fair value adjustments as part of our audit. And we look at the pricing of those investments and confirm with outside parties to ensure that fair value that's being used and reporting those investments on your financial statements is accurate and reasonable. In addition, we look at the estimation process and the methods that go into the depreciation of your capital assets, which includes all the infrastructure that is there in the city. And that is a comprehensive process where we're looking at additions of capital assets, deletions, and we're looking at how long you're depreciating your assets over. The other two large estimates that you'll find on your financial statements are your net pension and your OPEB liabilities. And there are many estimates that go into those, those are supported by actuarial valuations that we obtained from CalPERS for your audit. And we take a look at the estimates and the assumptions used and deriving those unfunded liabilities and the other liabilities. And we look at that as part of determining that those numbers are accurate and fairly stated on the financials. As it relates to disclosures, we have pulled out several of the footnotes directly that if you were to read the full book, these are the ones where we think they're, they are the significant disclosures for the city. The first is your summary of significant accounting policies. And that describes all of the policies used by the city and producing the financial statements. So where we're talking about estimates and judgments that go into those financial statements, it really details out, out those, those policy decisions that are made by the city, by city management and by you as those charged with governance for reporting your financial information. Again, your accounting policies are in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards, which would be governed by the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Each year, the GASB, it never rests, it continues to issue new reporting standards for municipalities and state and state government. And so we look at that each year as we go into your audit. So this year, we did implement GASB 83, which was certain asset retirement obligations. It did not have a significant effect on the city's financial statements. And we also implemented GASB statement, management implemented GASB statement number 88, which are certain disclosures related to debt, including direct borrowing and direct placements. And so those were two new standards that didn't really have a significant impact, but we point those out because they're new. Beginning on page 56 of the audited financial statements and 57, you can see that there are quite a few standards that are going to be implemented in the new years coming in, starting as soon as 2021. The GASB has given some reprieve to governments because of COVID in allowing delayed implementation on certain standards. And so you can still early implement, but we're recommending that people take their time to do that. Note seven is a full discussion of the benefits that you offer under public employees retirement system or CalPERS. Note eight describes your post-retirement medical care benefits. Note 12 describes any significant contingencies that the city is subject to. Note 13 is an, it's really an old disclosure, but it's the Placerville Public Financing Authority. There were some bond defaults that happened many, many years ago. These are financing authority debt, so there, we just continue to carry the disclosures on the financial statement until the debt is paid off. And then the last note, which is your subsequent event footnote, is we, we did issue this after COVID struck. And so we did include a uncertainty in our subsequent event footnote that we, you know, we don't know how long the closing and the duration of the closing and business and the phase one, two, three, and four is going to affect the city. We can't estimate the impacts at this time. And so that's really just a disclosure for purposes of, that has not been incorporated within any, any of the financial information that you see before you tonight. The other few bullets that we have here, five are there were no disagreements with management, that's a required disclosure. If there was, we did not find any, any material weaknesses in internal control or any significant deficiencies in internal control this year. I think that's excellent news. There were no accounting issues that we encountered during the audit that required the city to consult with outside accountants or get expert opinions in that. And there were no irregularities. The other two areas is really just to describe what our responsibility is as it relates to the audited financial statement as opposed to management and those charged with governance. And our responsibility with the audited financial statements is to perform an audit in a conformance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. Those standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government auditing standards that's issued. Oops, that went faster. I don't know. I think there's a timing thing on this. Government auditing standard issued by the Controller General, and that's the yellow book. We're required to communicate with you. That's the purpose of our meeting tonight. We also are required to assess the risk, audit risk of internal control over financial reporting, meaning that the internal controls, if we found they were deficient and possessed significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would report those to you. And then last, we determine the fair presentation of the financials in accordance with your accounting policies and standards. We render an opinion on the financials and issue any recommendations to management if we find any. Sometimes that last bullet is an iterative process during the audit. And the next slide is management's responsibility. You are responsible for the financials in presenting them fairly in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. Adopting sound accounting policies for your organization, establishing, maintaining internal controls over financial reporting and compliance, providing us evidence supporting the amounts and the disclosures in the financial statement. Dave could tell you that's a long list. And fairly presenting the financials free of material misstatements, whether those are due to error or fraud. And then also management's required to design internal controls in order to prevent and detect fraud in the organization. So talk about the audit results. So this is always the great slide because the, we have rendered on pages one and two of the audit, our audit opinion. And the audit opinion is what we call unmodified. The lay term is that's a clean audit opinion, meaning there is no higher level of, of assurance that you can achieve in an audit. That means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. We found that the accounting policies that you've adopted have been consistently applied from year to year. Estimates are reasonable, disclosures that we went through as well as the others are properly reflected. And you complied in all material respects with any compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on your major federal program or on the financials. Last is we prepared the GAN limit report. We did the agreed upon procedures accordingly, and there were no exceptions to those agreed upon procedures. And I'll go over the results of the, the single audit in a bit. So next, and I've got, I think, a timing thing on this, it's, it's timed to me. So I'm going to go pretty quickly through these slides. Essentially, the, the audited financial statements include several sections. The unmodified opinion is the independent auditor's report. The rest is related to the basic financial statements. And there are certain information that is included in here that is required or what we would call required supplementary information. That required supplementary information is unaudited, but we do apply some limited procedures to, for example, your budgetary comparison schedule, your MDNA, ensuring that it is consistent with the financials as presented. In addition, the required supplementary information and where you might be interested in looking is at the schedule of the city's proportionate share of your net pension liability and related ratios, contributions and your changes in total OPEB liability and related ratios. And then last is the supplementary information that is not required. It's not a required part of supplementary information in accordance with the generally accepted accounting standards or by the GASB. This is really just presented for additional information for your review. And these present the non-major funds as determined under our auditing standards. So these funds are all the other funds that are aggregated as non-major funds. Last is our report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements. That's the second opinion that we render. That's towards the back of your, it's a very back part of your book. And in that, if we did find significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would have pointed those out in the report, but we did issue a clean opinion there, clean report. Next, I'm going to go through a few slides on an overview of the financial statements. I know that the book is large. This is really just condensed financial information. And so first, I will talk about the single audit. We did issue those two opinions, internal control over financial reporting and compliance. That was the one that's in the back of the book and compliance for major programs and internal control over, over compliance. That's your federal award program. So when we looked at your federal awards, you expended in fiscal year 2019, two point, almost 2.3 million. We audited, it's one major program, as you might recall, the Highway Planning and Construction Grant. And 2.2 million is what we audited. So we really tested 97% of your federal programs. And when you look at the schedule of findings in question cost, you'll see that we did not have any findings. So everything was in compliance with the standards and accordance with uniform guidance and the compliance supplement. Next is really just to look at the several statements that are significant. Your audit is broke into the government-wide financial statements, which is really a comprehensive financial statement for the entity in total and includes not only your current assets and liability, but also long-term liabilities and long-term assets of the organization. So those kinds of capital assets and infrastructure and long-term debt there and pension and OPEB costs are accounted for in here. So when you look at these numbers, governmental activities, it is broken between governmental activities and business type activities. Business type activities are those where you're charging a service, charging for service rendered to the citizens such as water, et cetera. Governmental activities are your governmental. So this is on a full accrual basis. At the end of the year, you have $62.5 million in total assets, 3.2 million in deferred outflow of resources, 22.5 million in liabilities, deferred outflow, inflow of resources of 582,000, resulting in a total net position of 42.6 million. If you look at your business type activities, following that same thought process, 73.7 million in assets, little under a million for your deferred outflow of resources, 55.8 million in liabilities, a small deferred inflow of resources and an ending net position of 18.6. So total net position this year was 61.2 million government-wide overall for the whole primary government. That is an increase over the prior year of 4.25 million. Assets went up by 4.2 million to 136.2 million. The 4,008,302 in the total column and the 793,000 is mostly related to pension and OPEB costs and change in estimates that have been deferred on the balance sheet. Liabilities are 78.2 million and those went down by about $833,000 this year. You can see the net position at the bottom, it's 61.2 million, has several components, net investment and capital assets. Those are the long-term assets that are up in 136.2 million. Those are total 62.8 million dollars at the end of the year. And then those net position or those assets less liabilities that are restricted as to their purpose or use. You have about 11.1 million overall split between governmental and business type activities, leaving an unrestricted deficit of 12.6 million. And this is not uncommon to see in cities in California and across the country today. And that's primarily due to the implementation of the GASB standards related to accounting for pension and OPEB liabilities. So it's your unfunded is really driving that deficit, which will be made up essentially over time through your funding model. The next is statement of activities, whereas that last statement was showing a position and time for the city at the end of 2019. This is your fiscal year ending 2019 and includes 12 months of activity. Again, split between governmental and business type activities. So total expenses for the city last year was 25.5 million. Total program revenues was 18 million, leaving a net negative cost of service of 7.5 million. But when you pull in your taxes of 11.8 million, you'll see overall your change in net position was 4.2 million. And that was the increase in that position I talked about on the prior slide. Of this, there was an increase of about 6.78% in your general revenues due to the increase in sales taxes in the current year. Let's see. So the next slide is your governmental funds statement for just the general fund. And this is again, the balance sheet as of June 30th of 2019. It's, it's showing you a snapshot at a point in time. This is a condensed display. You can see the detail in your audited financial statements. But your total assets in the general fund were 2.7 million, total liabilities were 821,000, leaving a net fund balance of 1.9 million. You've got 284,000 non-spendable. Those are typically due to prepaid items or inventory and then an unassigned available fund balance of 1.6 million. Activities for the general fund, you can see here, it stayed relatively flat. Your change in fund balance was a slight increase of 34,000. So you're essentially breaking even. Your total revenues were 9 million, close to 9.1 million for the year. Total expenditures were 8.8 million. And then you also had a transfer out of 164,000. I'll go through some key financial indicators and pension and OPEB information next. When we take a look at your net cost of services to tax revenue, and this is looking at all governmental activities citywide, so that first government-wide statement. Your total expenses for the city were 17.4 million. And if we were to net out the program revenues, which are the, those that are more controllable, your charges for services, your grants for operations and your grants for capital, we net that out at 9.6 million, it leaves us with 7.9 million net cost of service. And we make that up with our tax revenue of 10.4 million. So your net cost of service is substantially less than your tax revenue at 75%. Some of these we see going the other direction. So that, that's a good ratio. I like to see that. The next is looking at your unassigned fund balance and how much you have available and set aside. We looked at the 1.6 million two slides ago. That's how much you have available. Your annual expenditures in your general fund are 8.8 million. So you've essentially set aside about 18.5% in your general fund reserve ratio. And that's generally around two months is what the GFOA recommends as kind of a baseline. Some are higher, some are lower depending upon the city. Next two slides are pension. This is actually showing the city's net pension liability at a discount rate for both the miscellaneous and the safety plan. The total liability at the end of the year is 18.4 million. And your funded ratio for both miscellaneous and safety are in that 65.7% to 69.8%. That's not out of the range of the survey of California cities that we do. But if you were to take in account that they might, if they did drop the, the discount rate by 1%, you can see that that liability grows substantially to 26 million. And if they were to increase it, it would go to 8.15% or drop the liability down to about 12. The next slide is your OPEB information. And here, you can see that your total OPEB liability using a discount rate of 3.13% is about $4 million at the end of the year. We're not setting aside assets for this currently. It's at 0%. And so there really isn't a funded ratio here, but again, looking at this, it doesn't change really substantially. You know, you go up to 4.4 million or down to 3.6 million. So I believe that concludes my prepared remarks. Other than, I would like to thank Andrew Roth, who is the director on this engagement. He really is the person that works a day, day to day with Dave and his staff. And we would like to also, I'd be remiss not to thank all of your staff for working with us. And in fact, during kind of an uncertain time to get this wrapped up. But with that, I'll close my presentation and open it up for any questions.
Thank you Vanessa for the presentation and for packing a lot of information into a, a short window here. So we really appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and open it up for any of my council colleagues for any questions or comments at this point. Change the screen here so I can see everybody. Yes, Dennis?
Good afternoon. I was curious, our city is moving towards transitioning our treasurer's position from an elected to an appointed position. And as, as you've gone through and done these evaluations, have you seen any significant impact one way or the other, whether it's an elected or an appointed position?
Um, Dave, you want to, you want to talk on that first? Or you want me to address that?
Sorry Vanessa, I actually have a staff report on tonight's agenda that discusses that. So I think what councilmember Thomas is asking for is kind of an independent file on that.
Um, you know, it really, it really depends on the city, is what I would say. Some of the treasurers that are an elected position as opposed to an appointed position are more of a fixture and are not really that active in playing an active role in the treasury function. I think, and you know, I was the chief financial officer for City of Stockton. I was the appointed treasurer and that puts responsibility on management. Part of your executive team to be responsible for the investment decisions of the organization. Often, you know, you see, you know, typically you're outsourced for purposes of management's decisions or investment advice if you're not the expert in it. And often electeds are not experts in the investment world either. And so I, I, I would say that when I've seen the elected position, it's typically not an active role in the investment process for a city or municipality. And when you bring it actually into an appointed position, you start to have more activity in that treasury department and more oversight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your honest opinion on that.
Further questions, comments? Okay, seen. Yes, Patty? Further questions, comments? Okay, seen, yes, Patty?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you very much. It was great, and you really make this what could be a really boring thing. It isn't. The way you explain everything is very concise, and I appreciate it. And congratulations, Dave, once again.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for any public comment.
If you're joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak, and you'll be called upon using the last three digits of your phone number. If you're joining by your computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. And mute yourself when called upon and voluntarily give your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I will let you know when you have one minute remaining. And we will start a public comment with call-in user one.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Just a heads up, there's almost a ten-second delay between the phone and the computer. The phone comes first, and the YouTube feed comes ten seconds later. So Regina's been doing a beautiful job on asking for last call for comments, but just so you realize, if you're watching it on video, but you want to comment on it, it takes, there's a ten-second delay to call in. So just a heads up on that. There was one slide there. I'm still dizzy from that queue spinning back and forth unnecessarily. No problem, technical difficulty. There was the difference between the rate that the state sets, I believe, for unfunded or pension liabilities. And the difference of one percent down and one percent up was almost like double the dollar amount. Could somebody like address that, explain that a little bit more? And does the state actually control the rate that is set? And then we just have to follow it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll hold that answer until we go to the rest of public comments, but we'll try to answer that for you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna take last call on item three point one. I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, did you hear me? There are no further public comments?
Oh, no, thank you. Okay, so we had a question, I believe it was on the discount rate, and then whether, even if it goes up or down a percentage in the, the large changes in the amounts. I don't know, Vanessa or Dave, if you wanted to just give a little bit more of a background on that. And then whether or not we have a choice in what that number is.
Take a stab at it. So it's my understanding that the CalPERS board actually sets the discount rates. And they do that through analysis, looking at their historical investment trends and kind of what they're seeing in the future and what's reasonable. It's a major policy issue, and in the past, they've held webinars. They have received input from a variety of, you know, cities, counties, the state, an input of that because it does affect our contribution rates. But ultimately, it is the CalPERS board, which is influenced by the state, but they ultimately, they have their own board that sets that. Vanessa, I don't know if you want to comment on that as well.
Yeah, that, that's correct. So there is actually a policy, and it's pretty detailed. It's available online on the CalPERS website. They, the CalPERS board went through a process, and I'm trying to think about how many years ago. I guess we're probably in the third year where they were reducing the discount rate. And it's stayed relatively stable now for the last few years. They do consider adjustments to it. As you know, they've had some really good years in the last few years. And, and what happens in this, this sensitivity analysis is to say if they did adjust it downward or upward for any reason, what the impact to the city's unfunded liability would be. And so it's really a GASP requirement to disclose that to the public. So we've moved our model in our, our reporting methodology to showing that so that there can be some assessment on it. But as you know, these liabilities are paid out over a longer period of time. And so they're looking at really the long-term investment returns of that portfolio. I do know that they are considering some changes to their investment portfolio right now and looking at whether or not they're going to move their investment side into some more aggressive investing within it. That was a press, it came out in the press just yesterday or the day before I sent an article to Dave. And also borrowing eighty billion dollars to fund those investments. And so they are, they are constantly looking at this. But really, the city is, the money is in there, is in CalPERS, and it is earning that rate consistent with the rest of the pool because you're part of the cost-sharing pool.
Got you. And just to underscore, we don't have a choice as to whether or not we're, I mean, since we're part of CalPERS, that when that number comes out, we don't get to say, no, we think it's something else.
Yeah, you, you, you generally, this, I will say that the city is meeting its annual required contributions towards the plan, which is actuarially determined.
Got you. Yes, and that plan that just came out, there is an active lawsuit as well between two CalPERS board members about that eighty billion dollar potential borrowing that's going on as well, so we'll see how that plays out. Well, thank you both, Dave, Vanessa, for all the information. I did have a question myself as well, and that was in terms of our funded level. I know we're in the mid to high sixties there. What's sort of the average for our, for our grouping? I mean, are we like high, low, middle in terms of where that is in terms of our, our, our funding level?
Yeah, you're, you're in the middle, so you're, you're not high and you're not low. So you're, you're definitely in the middle and probably almost near, near kind of the average. So we do do a survey of cities and counties, and I can share that with Dave, and he could bring it to you as well. But we do survey those each year. Some, some are very low. And obviously with COVID, that's kind of a concern going forward for some of, some of the municipalities within the state. But being at the sixty-five to sixty-nine percent is a reasonable number. The funding on the OPEB is at zero percent. We are seeing that some organizations are using one fifteen trusts to not necessarily fund it within within CalPERS, but they are going to pars in some other areas to set aside money in a one fifteen trust in order to start funding those long-term liabilities for health.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Council? Yes, Councilmember Acuna?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to take a minute to thank Vanessa and all her associates that worked with us this year. And it's very important, part of the transparency of the city's financial statements, that they are audited in a very open and complete process. And it's, and I would like to congratulate Dave on another successful audit and a clear report. There have been years past, there have been suggestions that we've had to implement, so that it's not always clear sailing. And it is a very rigorous process that he and all of our staff go through and all, including our department head. So thank you to, again, to Vanessa and to Dave. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else? Okay, seen none. Likewise, I'll echo Councilmember Acuna's comments, just to thank Vanessa and Dave for all the work as well as your staff on doing this and bringing this information to us in a way that can be understood by not only us but by the public as well. So thank you for that, and you know, we're hoping that these numbers will stay the way they are. And you know, COVID provides a lot of uncertainties, and so we'll, you know, we'll see where we go from here. So again, this is a receive and file, so we've done that, and thank you both.
Excellent. Thank you. Good luck tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna then go ahead and move on to item three point two. And this is acknowledge and file the water purchase and sales report for calendar year two thousand and nineteen. And this is Mr. Warren.
I'm the counsel. This is some good news. The city purchases wholesale water from Colorado Irrigation District, as you know, and sells it to city businesses and residents due to its own distribution system. Some of the water purchased from the ID is not sold due to system flushing, fire suppression activities and leaks. And I do want to underline leaks. The city's aged water system, which has previously was riddled with leaks. The amount of unaccounted water was on the rise until the last few years, when the city began heavily investing in its waterline replacement thanks to much-needed funding from Measure H and Measure L. And I'd like to show you the graph on the screen here. Well. It's in your report. But essentially, in calendar year two thousand and seventeen, the city purchased one thousand four hundred and seventy acre feet of water from the ID. Of the one thousand four hundred and seventy-three acre feet, five hundred and thirty-six acre feet, or thirty-six point three eight percent was unaccounted water, as shown in the bar graph. Due to ongoing efforts by our engineering department and public works department to either replace or repair the city's failing water system, the amount of unaccounted-for water began falling significantly beginning in two thousand and eighteen, when it totaled three hundred and one acre feet or twenty-four point eight percent. So you can see it's fully declining. That trend continued in two thousand and nineteen, when the unaccounted-for water plummeted to nine point nine three, which is as low as I've ever seen it. I've seen it in the low teens, but not below double digits, so that's great news. So just a shout out to the voters. Thanks for Measure H, Measure L sales taxes, which are being invested in the city's water system, which not only helps ensure water is delivered in a safe and reliable manner to our customers, it also reduces the cost of operating the system by reducing the amount of leaks we have. And the cost savings from this, the four hundred and forty-three acre feet reduction in two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and nineteen is currently saving the city one hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, which frees up funding for further capital replacement and also reducing future rate increases. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, David. It's great news. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up of colleagues for any questions or comments. Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I was, I was really surprised to see that we were losing over a third of our water just a couple of years ago due to leaks, and it's just great progress in only three years to be down below ten percent from almost forty percent. So I was shocked at the first year's number, but it's, this is good news, considering everything that the city's going through. One question that I had is I'm in, I'm in the understanding that the leaked water was being calculated in our rates to the residents. So will this be able to save residents money in their rates down the line?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, water is one of our major cost drivers, but it's not the only one. And so what I see this doing is reduce, you know, reducing the need for future rate increases as much. And it also provides funding to, we have a lot of needs. And Measure H and Measure L are addressing a lot of those needs, but not all of them. And so it just gives you options. So in the future, when we do our next study, we will show you that and how we're progressing. And if you want to smooth rates because of that savings, we can look at that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions at this point? Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for three point two. And we will take call-in user one.
Good evening, Council. Sounded like the city is fixing the leaking pipes, saving money. Sounded like there was a hundred and twenty thousand dollar savings. That was my question too. Refund to the rate payers or fix more pipes? And I thought about if you divided the number of, anyway, small refund back to the rate payers or plunk that hundred and twenty K back into fixing more pipes faster. That's my vote. And then in a couple of years, maybe we can look at even bigger rate reductions. So my vote's for take that small chunk of change and fix more pipes. That's all. Bye.
Great. Thank you.
All right, last call for item three point two. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, I'll bring it back for further council discussion or comments. Any further comments from my council colleagues? Okay, I'll just, yes, Councilmember Acuna?
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, you know, this is an issue that I brought up at our last meeting and communicating with the rate payers and the all the taxpayers. And I'd like to get with staff and use this particular information, help put together some information that we can maybe present later this year that outlines our success, because if folks could see the graph and see the connection between the passing of Measure H and L and the huge improvement in lost water, it's just, it's a very positive connection. So thank you. Thanks to Public Works and City Engineering for a great job.
Thank you, Councilmember, and you're absolutely right. And there's no, it's not a coincidence that the Measure H and L coincide with this very huge drop-off in the amount of water that, that was really being wasted. So it's a huge, not vindication, but really showing what the worth is of that. And I know we'd have this conversation about our roads and our pipes the last meeting. And so this is a great report that came out to show the work that's been going into it. And would agree with the caller, you know, the more we can do on the front end, the less it costs us on the long run when we're able to do things today versus, you know, a year or even months down the line, everything's cheaper today than it will be in the future. So what we invest now will pay dividends for us. So again, Dave, in a year that has not a lot of bright spots, thank you for this report tonight. This is great, and again, for Public Works and Engineering, we all keep up the good work on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just as a side note, it was recommended by your Measure H, Measure L committee to add this information to your annual report, which will go out with the January utility bill.
Great. Yeah, because I do, I do think we need to sunshine this information, as Councilmember Acuna said as well, so that people know exactly how their tax pair, that their tax money is being spent. So that's great. Okay, so again, that is a receive and file update on three point two. So then we will move on to item three point three, and this is our COVID nineteen update. And I believe Mr. Morris has this report for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have a lot to add. I think we've all been kept up to date to a certain extent on what is going on. We continue to open up more business. It's great to see our businesses in town up and running for the most part. There's a few that still may not be, and some still have restrictions, but I think we see a lot of activity going on, at least in our downtown area and in other parts of the city with businesses opening up. I just quickly want to mention, some of you may have noticed quite a large jump in the number of cases over the weekend. I believe it was fifteen cases over the weekend. But I noted that that also included fifteen hundred tests. So if you look at the percentage of positive, that only comes out to about one percent, where I think the state average is running around four and a half percent or higher. So the positive rate tells us we're doing well. Now, report today, there is one hospitalization that is up at Barton Hospital. So it is not here in town or in this on the western slope. So we are continuing to do well. The fact that we don't have hospitalizations is very good and positive moving forward. So we'll continue to monitor. I think the county's doing a good job with the contract tracing when they do have these cases, and they'll continue to do that. So any questions you have, I'll be, I'll attempt to answer those.
Okay, thank you, Cleve. Colleagues, any questions for Cleve at this moment? Okay, seen none. Okay, seen none. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Comment is now open for item 3.3. We'll take caller 525.
Good evening.
Hi, am I on?
You are. Good evening.
Okay, first time. Technical glitches. I'm 67, and my wife, I just retired to take care of her, and she's very immune compromised. So obviously, my perspective is going to be much more careful than what I'm experiencing, both from your public spokespeople and the county. And then from my perspective, very sadly, from everybody else in terms of taking care of those of us that are most vulnerable, which is my wife's situation. So I know there's a lot of controversy, but I wish that there was greater leadership so that when we go out, we are not encountering so many unmasked people, so many staff at local businesses that we want to, you know, help get back to business, no masks, no signs. And then, you know, I love our police department, but when they post, "It's not police business," everybody jumps on top of that. And what I've seen in other places is, hey, we're gonna lead with education, but we could end up citing you if you guys just keep, you know, scoffing at the rules and the regulations. So I'm glad that we're low, but everybody else is spiking, and there's some controversy over that 15. And from my perspective, one more case is just too much, because it could be my wife's. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Now taking public comment from call-in user two.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My comment, yeah, my comments aren't whether pro-mask, anti-mask. I mean, everyone should be free to make their own choices. Businesses can say, "You must, you can't," or whatever, you know. My, was the plan for bringing the businesses to help the businesses during the lockdown out onto the street, has the city kind of let that go? It seems like everything's back to normal, gangbusters. It's insane. The Tahoe traffic is back. I think shutting down Main Street would not work right now, but this might happen again. So maybe we don't close down parking spots on Main Street right now to help businesses out. But you should still just take this time, come up with a plan that can be implemented immediately if something dramatic happened again in the future. I like the plan you were discussing about bringing in the retail out on the sidewalk, turning the parking spots, I'm talking about old Main Street, turning the parking spots into sidewalk, basically. So continue with those plans. So you have something on the shelf that you can grab in an instant when something dramatic happens in the future. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Now taking public comment from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Good evening, Jonathan. Jonathan, I think you're still on mute.
Yeah, okay. I know there's three minutes, but I just want to tell you, you all are doing a great job. It's phenomenal. I don't know if we're the only one of the 58 counties that hasn't had a death. I think you have done a phenomenal job. And while I'm, I am 73 years young, I hear so little about, I mean, I take 2,000 milligrams of vitamin C every morning and Ignatia, but there's so little emphasis from Falsy and Dr. Kirk and from the top level as far as immune system. And while I feel for the previous caller and his wife returning to normalcy that you don't quarantine the well. Historically, you quarantine those that are at risk and those who are sick. So I just want to say you're doing a wonderful job. And I was gonna talk at public comment earlier, but it took me like 15 minutes. I talked with Regina and Aaron both, and still it took me 15 minutes to get into the meeting. So they told me that they had never, they had never come at it from the, the public's way of entering. And I finally got in by clicking on the agenda for the night to get to the page that took me into the Zoom. So I think that can be made easier for the public. And just the last thing, and I'll, you know, I'll speak again. But Pat and Don Vandecar are speaking about not re-upping the nomadic shelter this November. And just as a heads up, the volunteer response is very slim. And what could, what could work just to plant a seed is if you encourage the county, which has got a 30 times larger annual budget to the city budget, to find a single place from November through March to help our homeless, that would be great. So that's just a heads up on what is coming up in November. And let's get ahead of the curve on that. And I admire your joint resolution with the county supervisors. You're doing a good job. God bless you all. I've been praying for you and your families and the whole community. I'm done. Blessings.
Thank you, Jonathan, for those comments.
Last call for item 3.3. I see no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I will bring closed public comment and bring it back to the council for further comments. I know there was one comment in regards to the streets, and it will, we'll touch on that a little bit later in this, in this meeting, when we talk about the sidewalk dining, which I think will answer some of those questions on that front. Thanks. I don't know if anyone else had any other comments on COVID. Okay, seen none. Again, still with us. So everybody, please continue to follow the guidelines that are set out by the state and the county and the city. And we will continue to monitor this as we go forward. Thank you. We will then move on to item 3.4. And this is a receive and file update on public records request. And this is Ms. O'Connell.
Sorry, let me just unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just want to give you the update for public records requests. We currently have six open. As you'll see on your staff report, there are five listed, but we did respond to one of them. And that was the draft traffic calming policy. So that has been responded to. We have two new requests that we received, both from June 22nd. The first one is from Rick Smith. He is requesting zoning and code violations for two properties on Cold Springs Road. There's also another request from Louis Smith III regarding all kinds of documents of communication between the North America, sorry, the Native American Heritage Commission and the city or, and city contracts, contracts, sorry, regarding various tribes and organizations. So those are both in the process of being responded to, as well as the remaining four. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to help or maybe defer to the city attorney.
Great. Thank you, Regina. Does anybody have any questions at this point for Ms. O'Connell? See, now I had, I had one, Regina. So are we, are these all, so they're all still open, the ones that are on the, on the report right now? Or are any of those closed?
No, the ones on the report are still open, except for the one regarding the draft traffic calming policy. We were able to respond to that today. But everything else is still in process. We may be still trying to get some information or clarification from the quester on a couple others. John Driscoll may want to jump in here. I'm not sure, but.
Okay, thank you, Regina. John, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
No, I think Regina summarized it appropriately. There were the two new ones that are not on that list that came in that she referenced. The one on the traffic calm policy, we sent out a response. I think Regina did that today. And on the last one listed on there, we have, I think Regina sent out a notice that we're gonna take another 14 days, as allowed under the government code, because those records that we're gonna have to search are kept off-site.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Regina. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is open for item 3.4. We will take call-in user two.
Good evening, Council. Given the COVID shutdown and City Hall was closed for a while, what is the current process if somebody wanted to request public information, public documents? Could somebody just state how you can contact the city, how to do it properly, and all that? Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. We'll do that at the end of public comments. Thank you.
Last call for public comment on item 3.4. We do have eight for six.
Good evening.
Hi, it's Jennifer. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Oh, hi. Yeah, no, I just, you know, I guess just if everybody didn't get the correspondence explaining the response to the draft calming, traffic calming policy. I mean, it's basically saying that you think it's more in the public interest to wait until the, the traffic calming, I can't remember. It's not a policy, it's a manual, okay? But, I mean, you know, you've been working on it. It was on the up and coming agenda items a while ago, although I think it's now dropped off. And Kara Taylor, when Friends of Clay Street met with Kara, you know, one-on-one, you know, she was referencing it, and that was pre-COVID, because we actually met in person, so that must have been early March or late February. And I guess I'm just, you know, the concept of the request was the draft, the working draft, whatever the draft is. And, you know, we understand that when it actually comes to public review, it's still essentially a draft, because you're inviting comment on it. And so, I mean, the whole concept of, you know, sort of stakeholder involvement is to involve people earlier, you know, in the process. And that's, you know, that's what this is. This is a neighborhood group that's been concerned about traffic issues for a long time. I think this traffic calming manual is partly in response to the concerns we've been raising. I realize there's other neighborhoods that have concerns. But, you know, the whole idea is, imagine that, you know, actually involving the citizens in the drafting process, in the creating the manual. I mean, whatever it is, and I guess I'm just kind of going back to, you got apparently a legal decision from John Driscoll that it was more in the public interest to wait than to provide, you know, the current working draft, whatever it is of this manual. And it's stated policy, but, you know, we mean the manual, whatever you're working on. We know we've, you know, had it being in progress for a while now. And I just, I do not understand why you can't release it. You're basically saying it's not in the public interest. And I would argue the opposite, that engagement, public engagement is good, it's healthy. You know, these are the people that are gonna be commenting. These are people that are very affected by traffic, you know, issues and whatever traffic calming you're going to come up with. So I would argue it's in the public interest to have early engagement. And you've had a long time that you've been working on this. So I would, I guess, reiterate my request, and I'll formally respond to, you know, the response that I got. But I'm just saying it here for the record that I think it's in the public interest to give us whatever the current, you know, draft of the manual is. And it's been supposedly on the agenda horizon for a while. So I guess if you can let us know when you think it's actually gonna be on a public meeting here, city council, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now taking public comment from Kirk.
Good evening, Kirk.
Good evening. The question I had for you is, is it possible for you to publish this information instead of on the agenda, that you publish it on the website and do what you did before, which is you actually give a copy of what the records requests were? The reason I ask is because it could save you a lot of effort and time. Why? Because there are some subjects that I asked about before. So that would enable somebody to avoid duplication. Next week, I'll probably give you a bunch of requests. They're gonna be directed towards some of the things that I see up there on the screen in the records request provided by others. And there may be duplication. How do I know? Because I don't see that information. So if you posted it in a report, and it wasn't just what was asked, but also copies of what was provided, then you could save yourselves a lot of effort. Avoid quadruplication and all the rest. Because that's exactly what the county does with their records requests. And apparently, it does save them time. In addition, apart from whatever you spend on having a law firm, I don't know how many thousands of dollars have gone towards having that firm sift through all these records requests, because it's a lot of money. Why don't you get interns who could do that work for a modest stipend plus the academic credit? So those are the questions I have, designed to help you save some money and some time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
I believe I've already called for last call, and I don't see any more comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. So I'll bring it back to council. I know there was, let's see, oh, there was a question about how to go about the process of filing a Public Records Request Act. I don't know, Regina, if you wanted to give a quick update on that in terms of how somebody can go about it. I think there's probably a couple of different ways here.
Yeah, sure. A public records request can be made over the phone. It can be made by email. The individual can still walk into City Hall. We're open here on the fourth floor. So any way they can get the request to us, we'll, we'll take it.
Okay, thank you. And John, I'll, maybe I'll put you on the spot here a little bit. Is there, I mean, in terms of best practices, is there anything you'd want to offer people in terms of how to frame their requests so that they get the information they're looking for, as opposed to maybe a lot of tangential stuff that's not relevant to their request?
Certainly. The more specific the quester can be with regard to what they want and what they're looking for, it's gonna help us refine the information that we have to dig through, and it can get it to them a lot faster. When we have big, broad requests that can overlap into a lot of areas and not just maybe what the person is interested in, it becomes really voluminous and difficult and burdensome. That's frankly what happened with the Wapoomnees request, where they listed a number of terms, and they wanted all of the electronic and records relating to all of these terms. I'm sure they got stuff that they did not want. We asked them to please help us and try and refine it. We did not get a response, so we had to go ahead and do what we were doing. So the more specific it can be, the better it's going to be that we can get them what they really want.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments for staff on this item? I just had one. In terms of Cleve, in terms of putting something up on the website, is that something we could do? I mean, I know a lot of this happened during COVID, and so we've been behind in terms of even getting some of this information put together in a way that makes it easy. But I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to having something up on the website, that list, you know, what's been requested.
Are you saying the actual documents to put up there?
The request, I know the documents is a whole other issue because of the amount and volume of having to do that, but just potentially the, like, what the request was.
So basically, this report, that we could, we could put this report up on the website. That's not an issue at all. But I think the request that I heard from the public was to post the documents. We actually do. And in some cases, that is not a big deal. In the most recent case of the large request we had, John, help me out. We were somewhere in the neighborhood of over 10,000 documents that we were. over 10,000 documents that we were providing in that case.
Originally, we had identified potentially 40,000 plus documents.
Right.
And, you know, one of the things that the law firm that we're using is helping us was they have the equipment to refine those things and to whittle them down. They've got them down to about 10,000 or something in that vicinity.
So as far as being able to post those online, that's, that's a little bit of a task. The county, I'm guessing, many agencies have the equipment to do that. So there's other, they have the program, software programs, et cetera, that do those. If the council would like to direct us to, we can look and see what is out there that we could maybe use to make that more feasible. But for most of these, just putting the report up that says what the request is, is fairly simple. It's when we post a program to post all the documents is a little bit more difficult and maybe would take some time to figure out exactly how we do that.
Okay, well, maybe we can start with, yes, Councilmember Barelli.
There's a question for John. I want to go back to what you were talking about where you, you're asking them to make more specific requests and that you had done that and you got no response. Do we have, there's no retaliation, and I don't mean that in a mean way. I mean, because of our situation, that we can say, hey, if you don't, you know, do this, then we can't follow through, or kind of to that, you know what I'm trying to say?
Right, right. There's very little we can do. Courts are very reluctant to say that a particular request is over burdensome. They don't look at the size of the city, for example. The request for us could be a real burden, whereas a city like Sacramento or Los Angeles could be nothing at all because they've got so many more resources. But courts don't look to the size of the city. That the court would look to in determining how reasonably timely your response might be. But the request itself is going to stand on its own two feet, so to speak. And there's not much we can do if people not only can be more specific about the records they want, but what the topic might be. That would also be helpful.
It just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem that that, you know, spirit of cooperation is there, and it would sure help, you know, I mean, you know, to help us out as well as we're trying to do our best, you know, with what we've got to help them out. So I don't know. Maybe I'm just being naive about the whole thing, but it just sure would be a nice help if they would see our point of view, so.
Thank you, Patty. Well, I guess I think maybe that's a first step, maybe at least just putting up what the request was. And then we can look into the future of ways to try to sunshine more of that information out for folks that request this for the public, for the general public to see as well. But I do know there's a cost to that. And unfortunately, now is not really the time where we have the ability to spend on new programs, but if we can at least put up the request, that I think that'll at least give a little bit more information to people that are looking for information. Okay, any further comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to item 3.5 with your brief comments by the City Council. And I will start with Councilmember Acuna.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Given the length of this evening's meeting, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
You're muted, Kara.
Yeah, sorry. I'm muted. I don't have any comments tonight either.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barelli.
I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Thomas.
So, but thank you, Mayor. So the mayor and I met with the progressive group on a week ago, Monday. And we had what I would consider a very productive meeting. We had the police department there, the the city manager, and and it was a very open and honest conversation about where we were successful and areas that from their perspective, the city could work on. I think that our police department did a very good job of acknowledging areas that they could have dialogue regarding their policies and procedures, as well as there was a sincere recognition that our police department does a really good job of what they do already. And so, and it wasn't as much about pointing fingers as it was about a discussion of bringing awareness to some of their concerns to our community in a, in a meaningful and productive manner and not, you know, poke in the nose in either direction. It is, and so we, I think we all agreed to work towards more communication as we move forward, potentially having some community meetings and kind of opening dialogue for, for people to come together and have some meaningful communication on some of their concerns. And honestly, I look forward to that. I think, you know, the opportunity to dialogue on these issues in a productive manner is far more meaningful than some of the other things we see going on in other cities. And I, and I really am proud of our city and how we have showed up and how we have been available and how everybody has participated in this process in a meaningful way and, but I consider a healthy way, especially for a city of our size. So, so that was our meeting. I look forward to that. I know the mayor has a few more things to add, but I will leave that for Mr. Saragosa, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And he's right. We had a really good meeting with the Eldorado progressives. And really, it was a meeting just to talk about, you know, everything that's gone on in today's, today's world with George Floyd killing and really how we look for a more inclusive Placerville. And I think that was sort of the top line of what we were talking about and ensuring that everybody is treated equally amongst our citizens and residents here in the city and in the county. And one of the items that came up was in our police department, I think, put something out already, but really an affirmation from the city in terms of our stance against racism. And I don't, I think that's a good thing for us to acknowledge and to say that we stand against racism. And so, one of the things I wanted to ask staff to do was maybe put together a a statement for us to look at as a, as a council to just basically state our unity in that matter is to say that, you know, as a city, we stand against, against racism in our city and in our county. And so we wanted to put that on the staff's radar to do that.
Request for future.
Yes. And then, and then for us to continue to have future, yes, at a future meeting. And then, as the vice mayor said, to continue to have these dialogues throughout the community with different groups, the faith community, different ethnic groups, and so that we have this conversation ongoing in Placerville. So we're all looking forward to that. And I could speak a little bit on behalf of my colleagues. I think everybody would also be doing that. So, thank you. Okay, on that, we will then move on then to, where are we? Item four. This is a closed session report. And Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the council did not take reportable action in closed session.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, the adoption of tonight's agenda.
Move for adoption.
Thank you, Councilmember Acuna.
I'll second Dennis.
All right, Vice Mayor, thank you. Ms. O'Connell, are all of those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, against? None? Okay. The agenda is adopted. Thank you, everybody. This evening, we do not have any ceremonial matters, so we'll move on to item seven, which is public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. And that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. So at this moment, I will move to item 7.1, which is written communication. And we have listed on here an email from Kitty Morris regarding the old Hangtown sign. I believe we have more than that in written communication. So I will turn it back over to Regina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this, we received several written communications emails on this item. About half of them, the person had wanted me to read it into the record. So with the guidance of the city attorney, we're just going to maybe highlight some of the things that were mentioned. I will read a few of them. So I apologize to those that I'm not going to get the chance to read aloud.
Regina, yeah, let me, I'll just step in here right, because I also had a conversation with Regina and the city attorney. And basically, like we would if we were in meeting in person, which hopefully we'll be able to do soon, if we had, you know, 40 people all on the same topic, you know, we probably would group those up a little bit so that everybody had a chance to say something, but would limit that time. And so we're doing this also in this COVID environment as well. So we're going to read some of them and then kind of summarize the rest as we go forward on these. And John, I don't know if you want to add anything on that.
No, it, I think both you and Regina have appropriately phrased it. Government Code Section 54954.3 basically allows the council to restrict public comment, especially when there is a number of comments on the same issue. It can restrict that comment. It doesn't have to allow a full period of time for everybody to say the same thing, so to speak. And that's not uncommon with many jurisdictions.
Yeah, I mean, I do this all the time in Sacramento. You know, there's sometimes there's two people that get to speak in favor of something for three minutes and then two against it for three minutes, and then the rest of us say, Michael Saragosa on behalf of the carpenters opposed or support. So it's, for me, it's something that I do quite often. So with that, I will hand it back over to Regina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so just generally, just highlighting some of what, you know, I found in common with a lot of these comments was the noose in and around the city, the noose on the city signs, the city logo on downtown storefronts, on merchandise. There were many comments about the old Hangtown sign, the hangman effigy outside the hangman's tree that's been there for several years. They found it to be unwelcoming to our town and mentioned that a lot of the local stores may, may get more business with those symbols and signs taken down. The symbols are offensive, symbols of racism and violence, and that these should maybe be kept in a museum. And that we could rethink a better nickname for the city, for instance, maybe Gold Rush Town. I will mention the names of the members of the public who did submit comments for, for me to read into the record. Carolyn Loomis, Laura Gularte, Joni Vincelletti, Susannah James, Gail Hesselgesser, Maureen Dion Perry, Jamie Hartshorn, Jen Florrie, Kenneth Paul, Irene Lipson, Susan Stoffler, Larry Johnson, Noel Hartshorn, Sherry Hoager, Ruth Michelson, and Art Vargas. I'll read a few. I know we've got time just to read a few into here. So this one is from Jamie Hartshorn. It says, "City Council, over the 18-plus years I've been a resident of Greater Placerville, my attitude toward the effigy hanging on Main Street has evolved from one of embarrassment at the backwardness of it all to outright disgust and abhorrence, especially after my nephew, a resident of Placerville, chose this method of suicide. Especially now, there was no getting around the fact that it and the noose depictions all around downtown stand for hate and intolerance. I don't care what color you say the dummy is, whether it depicts a real, live, dead, rather horse thief or whatever. The fact that it is strung up by the neck is symbolic of lynching, violence, and hate. And lynching has special resonance today. If I were a person of color, I would certainly steer clear of Old Hangtown. Unfortunately, you may not have a lot to say over the effigy because it's on private property, although it is hanging over a public sidewalk. The depiction is repeatedly touted as historic, ironic since it's dangling over the entrance to an ice cream parlor. Isn't that where you're supposed to take children? What a great history lesson. I doubt we can shed the old Hangtown moniker, but at least we should work toward eliminating images of nooses and bodies hanging over downtown's main thoroughfare. Surely, this isn't the impression we want to project today in 2020. We can find better ways to symbolize our quaint little Gold Rush Town. Thank you, Jamie Hartshorn." Hartshorn, not sure how to say that last name. Here's another one. To Placerville City Council, Noose's Effigy, this is from Irene Lipson. "This is the time for our city to remove signs of oppression, racism, and violence, to show we respect all people, indigenous, black, and people of color, IBPOC, and consider what we are teaching when we use these oppressive symbols for perceived commercial or social benefit. I write today as a resident of our city, 50 years in Eldorado County, and as an advocate for children. I care about children, and I know you do too. I have more than 30 years of teaching experience in Eldorado County, as well as advocacy work for children. In my teaching, I used anti-bias curriculum if possible, but the real-life lessons of children and families and communities are the foundation of education and the future. The lack of diversity in our county makes teaching and learning to respect, understand, and live in a non-diverse community a challenge we must meet. Not only do we care about the economic health of Placerville, we must consider the lives of the children who live here and who come as visitors. Children learn what they live. I have witnessed shoppers with their children laughing at the swinging man. There is no lesson except vigilante justice and oppression without an explanation on why we no longer use this form of justice. The proponents of keeping the hangman swinging and the name Hangtown ask if we are against a lesson in history, quoting historian George Santayana. Those who cannot remember history are doomed to repeat it. The effigy swinging is the teacher without a lesson in government and history, that vigilante violence is a way to solve problems in the Wild West years. It doesn't tell us that history chronicles lynching and hanging of American Indians, Californians of Mexican descent, and African Americans, according to historical records, in this area and in the United States, and historically Jews. The noose is an instrument of murder, not to be celebrated or preserved as a tourist attraction. Santayana would say history is taught in books and media. The hangman belongs in a museum, and to tell the stories of Placerville through the written word, the written word, history, social justice, art, music, and theater. For justice and for all children in our community, remove the signs of hate and oppression in Placerville." I have one more. This is from Sherry Hoager. "I would like to express my revulsion for the public display of a noose on any city signage or advertisement and the glorifying of hanging in promoting our town as Old Hangtown. Also, to allow a dummy to hang from the building that greets locals and newcomers to our town is incredibly offensive and inappropriate. It is an embarrassment, and I'm ashamed that we allow it to continue. The hangings were a small part of our history and not deserving of the attention given to them in the name of marketing. Let us be known for a broader historical context combined with today's gold. The friendliness, charm, agricultural riches, great food, art, and music, incredible beauty, and natural environment. Thank you for your consideration and for the work you do to make this a great community, Sherry Hoager." So let's move to public comment. Okay.
Yes, all right. Yes, and we will move on to item 7.2 with oral communications.
Let's take public comment from 613.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lucy. I'm a resident in Placerville and a business owner. I moved here two and a half years ago and was excited to start a business, an organic farm that has become successful. And while I spoke to my friends of color, all of them expressed fear and kind of disdain for Old Hangtown and have been nervous to even visit me here. It is something that is not welcoming to display a noose on the street signs especially, and on the police cars at that to say Hangtown. And that be the symbol of a town that can be wonderful. But I'm a millennial. I'm 32 years old. I intend to stay here and raise a family here. And I want this to be welcoming to And I want this to be welcoming to other millennials and Gen Z folks who will grow up and start businesses. And the reality is that the new generations value equity and we value justice and tolerance. And I think it's time to lay it to rest and identify in a new way, in a way that is inclusive and tolerant and loving to all people and acknowledge that the noose regardless of Placerville's specific history is a violence symbol that incites fear in people, especially black people of color in the United States. And to this day, people are dying from being hung from trees. So I appreciate you taking the time and hope that you will consider taking action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Michael Saunders.
Good evening.
Evening, City Manager, Mayor, City Council, I'm Mike Saunders, and I also met with you guys before and the Placerville Police Department. I'm an African-American male. I've lived in the county for approximately 15 years. Also an elected official and an ultimate commissioner on the Eldorado, Alaska. I'm also the president of the county's medieval group. We meet in downtown Placerville on Main Street once a month. It's sad that the history of the town choose to remember from one day of vigilanteism in 1849 when three men were hung. Even a year after that, they changed the name to Hangtown. The residents wanted to change the name to something more welcoming, which it finally did in 1854 when they incorporated to Placerville. Despite the history of the Gold Rush Pony Express or even the Sierra Pacific Railroad, this is what the merchants and residents choose to participate. I have never patronized any store in Placerville that openly displays a noose. I never bring my family or friends to Placerville because it's offensive. I may consider moving our medieval groups meeting out of the town. The problem with the name Hangtown in it of itself is not problematic as when it lends itself to people being able to use the noose as imagery in combination with the nickname. For example, we are well aware there was a doll of Colin Kaepernick which was hung from a noose. We all aware that the history of the Northwest of lynching is one of those wiping out indigenous people to clear the way for the Gold Rush, followed by the lynchings of Hispanics and Mexicans. And we know what the history of lynching is for people of color in this country. Tie this in with the town nickname of Hangtown with noose iconography, where people of color are also yelled at by drivers or passersby with racial slurs. And the folksiness of George in Hangtown is really not what the city is portraying. And I just want to leave with AB 412, which is the Law in California for Hate Crime. Section 1Dree says, "Given this history to a reasonable person, the display of a noose at a school, park, place of employment, or other public venue amounts to a direct and immediate threat of force that would intimidate persons based on racial characteristics." Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Now taking public comment from 992.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
This is Ed and Sammy Ingram. Just a comment on the Hangtown saying we need to leave it in place. It's not a non-racial or non-ethnic symbol. It's a part of our heritage and property of town. It's not no longer called Hangtown. It's now Placerville. Please leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Robin Gunning.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Joanna Torres Velasco. I'm 13. And in my opinion, it's kind of weird to have a dead guy hanging in the middle of our town. When me and my friends, when me and my friends go get ice cream, it's creepy to see some guy that looks like someone that could be in my family hanging on a noose. That's not a normal thing to see in towns. And I'm surprised that it has been allowed to continue hanging for this long. It embarrasses me when people who aren't from around here come visit and see a dummy hanging from the town's buildings. This is my town. This is where I grew up. And when I go to Main Street, I don't want to have a constant reminder of the town's cruel and disgusting past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Taking public comment from 525.
Hi, my name's Leo Bennett-Koshon. Thanks for taking my comments. I first want to express my appreciation since it's so hard doing it this way, but I'm seconding what the mayor said when you go to Sacramento and address. What I always look for is our elected representatives listening. And I'm looking at all your faces and you're all maintaining that listening posture. So thank you so much for that. I listen to people that talk about history and the need to keep history. But I also look at the sign, the very small sign when we come into Placerville, and it's on the shoulder of the highway before the welcoming sign, and it says, "Old Dry Diggings, Old Hangtown, and Placerville." And somehow, we're in this ongoing dispute, as a prior caller said, over a nickname that represents a very short period of time. And I think your challenge as our leaders is, how do we find a way to bring the community together as we're trying to do across the country, as we've done successfully, as you shared with the progressives and the police department and the demonstrations? And all these nooses, I think they need to belong in a museum. Nobody's talking about erasing history. It's just what do we remember? What do we commemorate? I appreciate the emails and conversations I've had with your wonderful city manager, but I'm looking at a noose in a tree right over his head because that's the city seal. That's not welcoming. Things change over time, but it has always been a sign of violence. And the first lynching in this town, and it is called a lynching in the historical records, that part's been erased. So if we want history, maybe we need to bring it back. There were citizens and actually a constable from another county that resisted that. And the second lynching, our first mayor, Alex Hunter, resisted and said, "This is not what Placerville's about." And that's why the name got changed. You know, you look at your website, you look at the history. You don't see everybody understanding about Johnny Wheelbarrow, which to me is like just so much more than what we celebrate with the Old Hangtown and the nooses. We have a great holiday coming up, Memorial Day, for Sheriff Staples, end of watch, July 1st. You know, that's the kind of stuff that needs to be in everybody's consciousness, not that short period where law fell apart. I think we need to bring that back. We need to remember, we have the name of the person that's lynched. His name's Manuel. Let's recall him, and let's do what the Downtown Association says. Let's discover more than gold, which to me is our friendships, our inclusiveness, not the exclusiveness of violence. Thank you for listening. You need a timer. Be easier for me.
No problem. Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Cody.
Good evening. Well, Cody, I think you're still on mute.
Hi, my name's Cody Curtis. I moved to Placerville three years ago to start a business, a farm here. And I also believe it's time to retire the Hangtown nickname and new symbol from all city property and especially from all police property. I think most people recognize them as symbols of violence and living legacies of the systematic oppression of people of color around the country. And in our, in our instance, the foothills are home. I don't think this history should be forgotten but remembered appropriately. And I, I believe there's lots of good ideas about museums or plaques or statues and ways to not forget it, but it is not an honorable part of our history, and I don't think we should honor and celebrate it. So I think, you know, I think council members, it would be good to take this opportunity of national reflection and make this modest but important step in dismantling racism in our community by taking down these symbols. Please do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Andrew Wonderschmidt.
Evening, Andrew.
Evening, council staff. Thank you. Super quick, kind of to change lanes, but not really. I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor for taking meetings with the Eldorado progressives. And I especially want to thank Chief Rinn for his recent move to ban the sleeper hold from the manual of the Placerville Police. But I will say that, you know, I think that the Hangtown moniker conversation is tied up in the same conversation we're finding ourselves in. So consider them part of the same, the same conversation. I won't say anymore, but thank you for the work you're doing so far, and I hope that it doesn't stop there. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from 846.
Yeah, hi, it's Jennifer. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening, Jennifer.
I, I think this is a really valuable dialogue, and I hope that it's going to be one that we allow to kind of continue for a while. But I actually, you know, I, I think I've seen that with, on the police cars. I really hadn't tuned into it there where I think it has even another kind of a meaning. But I just want to say, you know, this, this was the name of this town. I mean, and it, it was the name for, you know, longer than just a moment. And it, it, you know, it does refer to things that we should understand. And this is one of the reasons why we think the courthouse has a great possibility for educational programs to talk about how we dealt with, you know, issues of, you know, law and order and justice, and how that, those systems have evolved and, and, and why that, that is a place that, that we could actually have really amazing provocative programs. But I just want to say, you know, I, I, I appreciate that this is a very emotional, evocative, you know, issue for people. And I want to share that I have some of that feeling about when I see the symbol of the crucifix. And I just want people to reflect on the power of that as something that we obviously, you know, look at a lot. That, that, and, and that, that was also a form of, you know, punishment for crimes and, and in some cases crimes that were perhaps, you know, enforced, you know, unrightly. And I just, I just want to say that, you know, there are a lot of symbols that are very pervasive. And this is one that I just think we should really reflect on and talk about a lot. And I think that the talking about it is really important, and I appreciate that we're having this dialogue. And I hope we'll keep, you know, hearing from a lot of people and perspectives on this. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now taking public comment from Kirk.
Good evening, Kirk.
Sorry, I had it on, yeah, it was on the phone. So sorry, you heard it better. And that's where the unmute button came up. Let's see how succinct it can be in three minutes. First of all,
Why don't you turn down the volume on your computer, Kurt, or on your phone, one or the other, so you don't get the feedback?
Okay. Well, here's the idea. This, there's saying that the name glorifies hanging is like saying that the word "watergate" glorifies burglaries. One word can mean lots of things. But it was not, for one thing, vigilantes. That's false. There are only three accounts written by three eyewitnesses. One is the official count of those proceedings. The other two were written by journalists. And one of them was William Randolph Hearst's father. So if you haven't read those, forget it. That's what I'm looking at. That's the source of information. It was a trial, and someone said earlier it was manual. There were three persons hung that one day. I had been all my life opposed to the death penalty. I think it's gruesome. However, the fact is that hanging and, you know, a, by guns, a firing squad is what was used in the 1850s for carrying out the death penalty. There were a total of 15 in this town. The others were carried out behind the courthouse, the one that burnt down made of wood in 1910. But just as Jennifer said a moment ago, if we're going to take it as a symbol of, of violence, then you're going to have to go after the crucifix because that's pretty gruesome as well. At the time of the Gold Rush, it was chaos. It was outlawery. You could do anything and get away with it. You could kill somebody, steal, et cetera. So the hanging was a trial. There were 12 persons selected for the jury. Now, it was very primitive by today's standards, but it was a trial. Also, I'm really troubled by anytime someone who's white tries to tell me what African-Americans think or that their views are very simplistic or all under one umbrella. I talked to three last week on one day. Now, that's not a big sample, but I use that just as an illustration that there are three dramatically different points of view, covered the spectrum. But the one in the middle, I thought was very interesting because he came from Mississippi and it had a much different meaning. But when he started to talk to people about the history, it took a different. So what people celebrated by this nickname, and again, it never was official name, was that this was a place for civilization. The same year, we had a sheriff's office, the first time in the state. The first sheriff's office in the state was right here. So civilization had come, no matter how primitive it might be by today's standards. That's what it symbolizes. The sign was made much more common when it was used as a, you know, the bar in the 1930s. Bars have unusual names. Like, are we going to say that the liar's bench glorifies lying? No. So what one person said to me who'd been from Mississippi, he said, what he recommended was, up there because we've got two plaques now, one's near the city hall that says it was vigilantes. Show me an historian locally who says that's true. None I've
Oops. Now taking public comment from 1234.
Good evening. 1234, you're still on mute.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hi, I'm Katie Morris, and I wrote the original letter that was on the agenda. And I've lived in Placerville for almost eight years. And I, I think it's very offensive. I, that's essentially, pretty much all I wanted to, to make note of is that it's just a symbol of violence. And all of, most of my friends are, they, you know, walk around the dummy hanging from the noose. They, they don't let their children see it. They, it's a, I don't want my, my child to see it. It's, you know, it's, it's kind of like, it's just not a, this is not a happy thing. And, you know, it's not a welcoming thing. Old Hangtown, the nickname itself is, it's not, I wouldn't say it's, you know, it's not, it's not like we're going to hang you when we come here, when you come here or something. And I think people get it, but it's just in general, it's, it's just not a positive thing. And it seems like we need to promote a positive town. We would like to welcome people, especially people of color. It's, I feel like the entire time I've lived here, there's been a racial undertone to this town. There's been an unwelvingness that I think needs to be addressed. There's this, this sort of sentiment of, you know, go back to the Bay Area. We don't want you here. And I feel like And I feel like the, the, the symbol of the noose, the the welcome sign, Old Hangtown, it just perpetuates this whole idea of, you know, go back to where you came from. You're not welcome. Though, most of the people that come through here on their way to Tahoe are from the Bay Area. They spend a lot of money here, and most of the merchants do welcome them. So it's, I do like the fact that we're all talking about it. I think it's a good thing. And I I thank you for putting it on the agenda. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Galaxy A five one.
So A five one, you're still on mute. Regina, why don't we move on to the next person?
Okay, Ruth.
Good evening, Ruth.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for listening to all of this. I'm just going to read something really quickly. It's actually the letter I submitted, but there was no time to read it. But it's very brief, and it's a little story I want to tell you. So imagine if someone put swastikas all over downtown Placerville. The local and visiting Jewish people would feel uncomfortable with the swastikas because of the association with Nazis and the Holocaust and the murder of their people. And by the way, I happen to be Jewish. But the Jewish people were told by city folks, no, no, these swastikas don't represent the Nazis. They represent other history of Hindus and Indians. To those people, they represented goodness and well-being, success and good luck, which is true. Jewish people, you need to be accepting because they are positive to these other people. It's a positive symbol. So the large swastikas were displayed in town for many years to come. Local Jewish people felt uncomfortable, and out of town Jewish people stopped coming to visit Placerville. This is same as George the dummy hanging in downtown Placerville. Many people say, no, no, it has nothing to do with lynching of black people or people of color. It's our history. Protect it. Learn from it. I had, it had to do with three horse thieves. But when people see it, it's like seeing a swastika. It represents terror. It represents shameful acts in our country happening even now. In the last two weeks, by the way, four black men have been found lynched in trees. All right, it's current, current history. We need to celebrate other aspects of our rich history, the discovery of gold, for one, the Pony Express, Waka Matsu, the name Dry Diggins. Let's put George to rest as well as the old Hank Town sign leading into our town. Let's celebrate the happy history that we have here in Placerville. George can always find a home in a local museum if people insist upon it. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, let's try Galaxy A five one again.
A five one, you're still on mute.
Okay, let's move to Jane McGinnis.
Good evening. I I didn't think I was going to have anything to say tonight, but I wanted to say that I've had a lively debate on Facebook for the last two weeks about this issue. And I have been very concerned about the pulling down of statues and the things that we're seeing in the last two weeks. And so when I was discussing this with Maureen Dion Perry, I I flung around comments like revisionist history and you know, we mustn't forget our history because if we do, we might repeat it. And Maureen just very calmly kept responding to me, saying, are you kidding me? And I have to say, I spent the last 20 years of my life teaching fair housing classes to landlords. And I spent the first half of my twenties working for voting rights in Alabama. And Maureen is absolutely right. We need to take this symbol down. It is ugly. It is awful. And it really does cover a very short term time of the city. But what a lovely name, Old Dry Diggings. And and the the great history of Placerville to show them how the placer mining cut the mountain in half and created these great streets and drives like Big Cut. There is so much that we could be saying, other than having a noose plastered on everything that tourists see and that incoming families see. If I were a 10-year-old African American child, I'm not sure I'd feel safe trying to get an ice cream cone. It's just, it's something so culturally absorbed by African Americans and by Native Americans. I just, I hope we will not continue this. And Maureen, sorry, if you're listening, you were right.
Thank you, Jane.
Let's take public comment from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
When I think about the Lincoln Monument being defaced, when I think about the non-logical irrational end game of the George Washington Monument either being taken down, disassembled, or his name being replaced. It reminds me of John, chapter eight, where they took a woman caught in adultery. Of course, she wasn't alone. That might have been the question that Jesus asked the man, asked in the ground, where is the man? But when he said, let himless without sin cast the first stone, none of us are. Whether it's callers who see the noose as an offensive symbol, it certainly is not racial, even though people read it into it. Neither is the cross a symbol of murder. But the ultimate plus sign that turns each of our human sinful minus into the ultimate plus of God's grace. So I appreciate the discussion here. We can't eliminate George Washington because he had slaves or Thomas Jefferson. Neither can we eliminate Abraham Lincoln because he declared martial law on journalists that were that were actually fostering sedition as some of the modern press is actually doing themselves. I just want to close in this. I've lived here 30 years. Only one speaker tonight has mentioned a longer tenure than that. But I do love the slogan, Placerville, the birthplace of the gold rush. But anyway, you all are doing a great job, and sometimes a rush to judgment is is the wrong rush. I think that a plebiscite of the entire county might be be an interesting revelation. God bless you all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right, let's try a third time Galaxy A five one. Don't think we're having any luck.
No, I think the third time was not a charm.
Call in user three.
Good evening, Council. Are we on public comment for anything?
That is correct.
Agenda, is that what we are?
That is correct, yes.
Anyway, had other things, but I might just speak to this. So Old Dry Diggings was named because the creek was minimalist. People had to huck their dirt all the way down to this meager little creek, probably wearing the men into early death. Hauling dirt all the way down to the creek, all the way back up for more, all the way back down, all the way to find color, right? And so I'm afraid if you use that term today, the ultra woke crowd today would say, they found color? What do you mean? Is that racist? No, it means they found gold. So trying to apply 2020 values, if you can call them values, onto almost 200-year-old history is ridiculous. There, I mean, it's not a slant to call somebody ignorant. There are a lot of ignorant woke people trying to force new restrictions on our current life for things that happened in the past. And I'm having none of it. There are also a lot of ignorant people being driven by Marxists in this country that are not ignorant. They're very intelligent, and they're using this ignorant mob to destroy America. So you need to take your time, take a deep breath. There's nothing pressing on this. Let people blow off steam as long as they don't pull down monuments because I will not allow that. And I just, we need to have a discussion and show these people it's history. Stop trying to conflate what you think is violence against black people. It was the system of justice when there was no state of California. It was the Wild, Wild West. There is still one state in the Union that allows hanging for contemporary crimes. So anyway, that's all.
Thank you.
I'm taking public comment from Elizabeth Dubose.
Good evening.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
I, we can, yes.
Okay, so my name is Elizabeth Dubose, and I have been the one that has been leading a few of the peaceful protests here in Placerville for the past couple of weeks. And I am a black woman. I have lived here for about 15 years. I've lived in Pollock Pines. I've lived in Camino, Diamond Springs. I've gone to Poor Reds. I went to El Dorado High School. I worked at Starbucks. I've been all around here. And never have I really thought that my life was ever at stake because of a hanging man or a noose. I just understood that, you know, yes, it was the history, and that was the history, and, you know, it was something. However, right now, that is what is happening right now. People are being hung, and the people that are being hung are black men and black women. And however, although George Floyd was not personally hung, that was a way for him to get hung via by knee of a white police officer and the whole, we are, we need to focus on the police brutality of this too. And I feel like when people see the noose and everything hanging, they think it is okay that we can kind of be a little racy. Because when I was out there that first day, that Monday, and I was holding my Black Lives Matter sign, someone did drive by me, and they did call me the N-word. And I had always told myself that if someone calls me that word, it's, it's really, I'm, you know, and I I will do something. But at the time, everyone is so like tense and has anxiety and about the looters and the stuff. And I didn't want someone to see another black person in Placerville being kind of crazy. And now it's on video, and oh, she's the looter. So I kind of held myself together. But like, I just feel like, you know, with all that being said, if we just remove these, they are racist things, like regardless, they are racist things. We just need to accept the fact that it is. And we just need to keep that moving. And yeah, I think we should put it in a museum. I don't think we should burn it down. I don't think that we should tear it apart. I think that we should keep it in those that want to talk about, oh, the was in the past and the history. Then you go to that museum and you pay to get in there, or maybe it's free, and you can look at what what was. We don't have to look at what was when I go get a haircut, or we don't have to look at what was when I go get an ice cream cone. Or we don't have to look at what was when I go do anything in my hometown. If you want to look at what was, then go put it in a monument in a little museum, and you can do that. I don't think everyone should have to do that when we don't want to do that, you know? So I know, I think I might have talked over the thing, but that's pretty much it, and thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And let me just say, it's reprehensible that somebody would 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 yell at you or anybody a racial epithet. So I apologize first, you know, for that happening here in Placerville. And thank you for taking the high road and and not engaging with that obviously racist person. So I just wanted to make that quick comment. Thank you.
Last call for public comment on item 7.1. Robin Gunning, I see your hand is raised, however, you've already spoken. Sorry about that. No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. The couple of things here. I know one, there's been some comments on the police cars having the noose and the cars do not have a noose. I just, Chief Rinn, if you wanted to add anything else, but that that symbol is not not on our cars, but I'll
No, it's, it's not on our cars, Mayor, and it never has been on our cars. We have no noose as part of our symbol symbology in the police department, none of our badges or patches, none of our stationery. There is no noose represented on any of those items.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, Councilmember Barelli. Oh, you're still on mute, Patty.
History lesson. Chief, I'm sorry to contradict you, but there was a time when somebody decided it was a good idea to put the noose on the police cars. And they were, they were put on the cars. But after a loud roar from the, from our constituents, they were soon taken off. This was, I don't know, Mark, do you remember how many years ago that was?
I would say it's got, it's got to be close to 20 years, Patty.
It was a long time.
Long time ago.
No, yeah.
Yeah, I was city manager at the time, and it was early on, early on in my tenure. And yes, it was a large uproar over it. And yes, they were moved, they were removed very quickly.
Yes. See, we're teaching Joe Rinn some history.
Thank you. Yes, Vice Mayor.
I would, I would like to have the, I guess, the city attorney address the issue of private property. I know that this has come up, this issue of the hanging man over the ice cream saloon or the hangman's tree, the epithet there. And I do know that at one point, we discussed this in Planning Commission. I think it went even to the City Council in terms of it, of the hangman and whose property it is and who has, who has control over it.
My understanding of the property, the dummy belongs to the property owner, but I could be wrong on that. That's just been my, my understanding all along. I don't think it's ever been owned by the city, for example. It may have passed on with the transfer of the building and the businesses that have been associated with that building over the years. In terms of what can be done about that, Mr. Rivas and I had a discussion today. And Pierre, I'm going to ask you to pitch in here as well. But we went back and Pierre looked at some minutes of a planning commission meeting where that sign was discussed and the topic of an agenda item with respect to the signage on the building, and the planning commission made a determination with respect to that sign. And so based on that, and I'll have Pierre fill in the blanks, it's my understanding that we're not in a position, the city's not in a position to declare that to be an illegal sign and have it removed. Pierre, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And if I'll just give a very brief history on how staff has acknowledged that particular sign. If you recall, back in 2012, the city received a site plan review application for doing some additional treatments and rehabilitation of the buildings known as the Eric Buildings at 3001 and 3005 Main Street. And so staff had always had questions about what exactly the hanging dummy was. We felt technically that it was a sign. When you read the city code, there is no definition of this type of a sign, say, a dummy. What does it represent? And the closest example I can think of would be, say, if you're in exterminator business and you have a large spider on your building or an ant. Those are signs depicting that you're in the business of exterminating nuisance insects. So here we have the hangman's tree. So here we have the hangman's tree. It was a bar for many years. I actually met, I met years and years ago, the son of, it was his parents that actually opened that bar, you know, decades ago, and they put the dummy in there and created this whole aura. This is the site of the tree where they hung these individuals for, for horse thieving. And so the dummy has been there ever since. So going back to the site plan review process, it gave staff the opportunity to actually ask the planning commission to interpret this sign. What is interpreted as a sign as an historic sign? So in our code, it reads, a sign is any device, fixture, placard, placard, or structure that uses any color, form, graphic, illumination, symbol, or writing to advertise, announce the purpose of, or identify the purpose of a person or entity to communicate in form of any kind of the public. So staff feels that that definition then would encompass the hanging dummy. It was a sign depicting the hangman's tree saloon bar. So we asked the commission, staff requested the planning commission make a determination for the record as to what sign type the dummy, noose, and gallows fall within the sign, city sign regulations. Because it's not just the dummy, it's the noose and the gallows, it's the whole enchilada, if you will. So, and that was back on August 21st of 2018. So I have the minutes here, and so it was moved and passed by the planning commission. The determination of the planning commission is that the hangman dummy is an incidental historic sign, therefore exempt from the sign regulations. So what does it mean to be exempt from the sign regulations? Well, because it's historic, it doesn't then, it isn't calculated in with square footage and those kinds of things. So when, when the city then approved of the Eric Buildings master sign plan, it also included the hangman's dummy as a legal sign. So it is a legal sign, it's been declared an historic sign. There were no appeals to that decision, so there the sign hangs. So staff has always looked at this, is it's come up from time to time. What, what can the city do if, if the sign is becoming to members of the public as being a nuisance? So what is a nuisance? So when you look at the city's code, a definition of nuisance under, under section C of 7-8-1 is shall not offend public decency. So if you make a finding, this offends public decency. Then you look at the section 7-8-3, which further decides, further defines nuisances affecting morals and decency. So I go to section D, it says, all indecent or obscene pictures, books, pamphlets, magazines, and newspapers. So it's kind of, it's sort of pretty definitive on what they're trying to encompass there. So it's not really talking about signs, but I think you could, you can broaden that to include signs. But then what's obscene? Well, signing a recognized exemption to the First Amendment that allows for regulation of obscene materials. There was some literature produced by Duke University Press. There was a, it was an article called Violence as Obscenity, Eliminating the Media's First Amendment Protection. And that was by Kevin Saunders back in April of 1996. So it sought to expand the definition of obscenity to include explicit and offensive depictions of violence. So that's, that's in reach, and I don't know what the courts have done. I would defer to our city attorney on whether or not that has been carried further, and that would allow the city to actually do anything further regarding the sign. So the sign is legal, it's on private property, it is not, not property of the city. So can it be defined as a nuisance? And if it's a nuisance, is it obscene? And if it's obscene, then is it the depiction of violence? I'll leave that to our city attorney to go further on that note.
Thank you, Pierre. Yeah, Pierre, I think you said it. It's a stretch at best. And the courts have not defined obscenity in the manner that was defined in that particular study, although I can understand, you know, why that was done, and it's certainly possible if a court may adopt that interpretation in the future. But it does not fall into the typical definitions that you would find for nuisances. It would be a stretch to try and put it in there. There's also a penal code section that Chief Ren provided to me earlier today. Penal code section 14, 11411. And it talks about any person who hangs a noose, knowing it to be a symbol representing a threat to life on the private property of another without authorization, or it also talks in some other areas. But the key words are for the purpose of terrorizing the owner or occupant of the property. There's an intent there that you have to find, and I'm not sure that you can imply that intent to the noose and the dummy that's hanging in Placerville. I may have that effect, but I don't know that you can apply that intent.
John, I know Mr. Saunders had brought up 8412.
That's the section, Mayor.
That is the section, okay.
Yeah, he read from the, actually, the very last part of some of the legislative history regarding that. I mean, it's very interesting. It talks about how many black people were hung during a period of time and references it with nearly one a week for every week between 1882 and 1930. So I mean, I can understand where that's coming from.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Acuna, I think you were.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the callers this evening for their participation and their respectful dialogue that took place on a very sensitive subject. To quote one of the earlier speakers, this is a time of national reflection. That was a very, very telling statement. And I think it's, again, I want to thank Pierre and City Attorney Driscoll for their input. I think they absolutely explained Vice Mayor Thomas's concerns that there really isn't a lot of ground for us to stand on. And I believe there are also other recent rulings in the state and nationally regarding First Amendment rights and advertising. So the ability for any city to regulate signage has become very sensitive and very, very carefully monitored. This has been a very interesting year for all of us, certainly. And this challenge is certainly one that I think is, is appropriate to address. In discussions with staff earlier this week, it was my suggestion that we have a perfectly wonderful historical monument in our town that is city property, that has been celebrated by, for decades by residents of Placerville, and that's the bell tower. I have seen some marvelous photos of that. It's almost a competition on a couple of the social media sites to see who can find the oldest and the, and the oddest photos of the bell tower in use by any number of various organizations. And it goes back to including the fire department, of course, the police department. There are a lot of great photos of, at one time, our entire police department fit under the bell tower. I believe there's also three iterations of design in the bell tower to where it is, where to what we know it as today is not what it was 100 years ago. So it seems to me that it would be time for us to direct staff to work, to begin the process to removing the hangman's tree, replacing that with, I think, a much brighter, much more appropriate city symbol, and that would be the bell tower. The, the idea of Hangtown, welcome to Hangtown. I think you go back to being very careful with their history. And I have asked a lot of folks, and nobody has thought of this, is that if you remove Hangtown, do you then rename the creek? It's Hangtown Creek. It was named that over 150 years ago for a good reason, because that was the history at that time. I think that's a discussion for another time, and I think that is probably best left for the history folks. And regarding the actual dummy, I found it very interesting that the owners were concerned enough to remove the dummy a couple of weeks ago at a height of civil unrest and where we had really, property owners took the expense to board their businesses up, including the Taylors, who are the owners of, of the dummy. And they've just recently decided that it's now safe to bring it back. I don't understand what has changed. I think it's very, personally, very inappropriate. And something that is unique now, the last time the dummy was stolen, vandalized, and down for many months while the, while it was restored, the Taylors didn't have any open businesses on their building. Well, they now have two beautifully restored storefronts. So since this is a private property issue, I would suggest that if they feel that strongly about the dummy, that they consider hanging it inside their ice cream parlor, or their vacant beautifully restored storefront, and they can have it on display and, you know, operate some sort of a history museum, which I know is something that is very passionate for them. So that is my personal take on this. And again, thanks staff, and especially thank all the citizens that have sent in all those emails. I have read every one of them. Again, very appropriate and respectful conversations aside on both sides of this. And I, I know there's, there's a lot of folks in this, suppose this means something. You know, I've been in this community since 1975. I actually dug underneath the old hangman's tree bar in 1976, working for a local plumbing contractor, spent three days underneath that building, digging in the mud, finding all kinds of old artifacts. There was no hangman's tree. I can assure you of that. And so again, there's another reason why we need to refocus our, you know, our symbology to look at something that's positive, and that's the bell tower. It's called our Firemen to Alarms and served as a call station for our police department. And I would just make that suggestion to ask staff if it's the council's wishes to move forward, making that changes in the, in the city's imaging.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments from colleagues here? Okay, I would, you know, we, we sort of started that discussion in terms of the, the logo, Councilmember Acuna. And I would agree with you that it's, you know, it's time for something new. And so I think staff is going to be looking at some options for us on that front, because it, we should not have a noose on the city of Placerville's logo. I mean, that's just the reality. At least that's my opinion on, on it. And so I think staff's going to come back with that. And then in terms of Hangtown, I do think that's a greater conversation that we have with the community. I too have read all the emails, it's different ones that have come to me outside of the amount that came in today. We've had, as the Vice Mayor said, conversations with folks as well. So we are definitely hearing that, but we're also not rushing to judgment on doing things as well. So we're trying to take a balanced approach to this and do what we think is in the best interest of the community, but also getting that input into us. And so with that, I think that's kind of where we're at this moment. Patty, you got a comment?
I do. I was just going to say the same thing. I really don't think we need to do a rush to judgment. I think we ought to take our time, and I think we ought to, because I think that this is like the beginning, opening up something. And we'll have a lot more comment from, probably a lot more of our citizens and, you know, come up with some. I do like Mark's idea of using the bell tower. I will say that I think the bell tower is right now used for a lot of things. I'm going to remind you that that's Thomas Kincaid's first picture was the bell tower. That's kind of what got him started. And, you know, it, it does have a lot of symbolism, and I think it's a great one. But I, I am concerned for the very reason that Mark mentioned. There are so many things named Hangtown. Are we gonna, if we, if we do this, does that mean that we're going to rename the creek? Or, and we've got a lot of businesses that, you know, that's their business, it's included in their business name. It's Hangtown Little League. I mean, we've got, you know, there's a lot of, that, that I don't think, those, those businesses, the Little League, the creek, I don't think, when people say Hangtown, I don't think it brings that connotation, you know, of Hangtown. I, but again, I don't know. These are all matters to talk about later. But boy, this could really open up a big hornet's nest, I think, if we're not careful. We, we need to do this slowly and, you know, cautiously and think about things, what we're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I believe that this is an important conversation for our community to have. And I think it's, it's something that we're talking about in progress, and it's a conversation we should have over time. One of the immediate things we can do, and I support Councilmember Acuna on the idea of looking at our, our logo. I think very simply, we can take the tree of the noose off now and just make that disappear. And, and I don't know how far, I'm sure John Driscoll's sitting there wondering when we're going to stop talking about this because it's not on the agenda, but I think that, I think that's something that we can do very simply right now. And then at a future date, work on what it looks like for the, for the, for the, you know, reworking our outward expression of the city. And that includes all aspects of how we express our view, how we express how we want to be seen by our community and the greater communities they travel through. So I do appreciate everybody's comments. I think they're important. I think we, I think it's something that conversations have been going on amongst, and I know I've had conversations regarding this with the mayor to some great extent. And, and it's, and it's, it's not, definitely not going without thought and consideration on our part. I do also agree that taking it slowly and methodically is important and involving the community in this conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for your comments. I'll just echo what everyone else has said, which is to thank the community for their input and for exercising their, their First Amendment rights to speak up wherever they are on this issue and to bring those voices forward. I think it's hugely important. We're going to continue to have those conversations. And I know we don't want to get too far out, so John doesn't yell at me in terms of where we're going, but I think you can probably see the direction, at least in terms of the logo here. So with that, like I said, we will have, this is not an ending conversation, but it's, it's an ending conversation for this evening as we're talking on public comments. So messages are received, and I'm going to go ahead and move on to item eight, which is our consent calendar. And so item eight, consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. So I will entertain a motion, or if anyone has.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember. We have a first and a second. I will now go ahead and open it up for public comments on the consent calendar, Benny.
I'm seeing no comments, Mr. Mayor, but I will give it one last call. A public comment is open for 8.1. All right, the public comment is open for the consent calendar. Public comment from Colin User 3.
Good evening, Council. So on the consent calendar, I think it's item 8.5. The election shifting from appointed to elected or vice versa. The question.
Actually, on that one, yeah, we're doing that one. That's item 12.4.
It got pulled, okay.
It's not on consent.
Yeah, it's an actual discussion item, the, that one.
Okay, so it was just the saving money for the election with the county. That was all that. That was all that eight point five was.
Correct, yeah, it's a consolidation.
Okay, no, no problem there. Thank you, that's all.
No problem, thank you.
No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. We're gonna, we'll close public comment. We have a first and a second. Regina, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna. Sorry, you're muted.
You're muted, Mark.
I'll do it this way, I.
Thank you, council member Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
All right, thank you. We do not have any items pulled from the consent or any ordinance this evening. So we will move on to item eleven, public hearings. And item eleven point one, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation limit, the GAN limit for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and determining compliance with government code section seven nine, seventy nine, ten. And this is Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item you take action on annually. Section seventy nine, ten of the state government code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust the GAN limit by both the prior year per capita personal income increment as well as the prior year change in population. The change in per capita personal income was actually three point eight five percent. And the change in population was one point two three percent. Based on these factors, the fiscal year nineteen twenty GAN limit is calculated to be twenty four million, two hundred and sixty six thousand, nine hundred and eighty six dollars. The general fund proceed revenue subject to the GAN limit is seven million, one hundred and forty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars, leaving seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty four thousand, seventeen million, one hundred and twenty four thousand, two hundred and forty seven of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Plasterville is well within its GAN limit. With that, I would ask that you adopt the resolution as presented and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Any questions or comments for Mr. Warren at this point? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
The comment is now open for eleven point one. Last call, eleven point one. No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
Thank you. Thank you, council member Taylor. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Barelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave. That might be a record in terms of a agenda item moving along, so thank you. Okay, moving on to item twelve, and I'll just take a poll, colleagues. Or does anybody want to break for five minutes? Or do you want to keep going? I'm good either way.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay.
Yeah, let's do five minutes.
All right, so it is eight thirty four, so we'll do six minutes. We'll do, come back at eight forty, we'll do a quick break. We will go ahead and resume and move to item twelve point one. Adopt a resolution ratifying construction contract change orders one through nine with Doug Vierkamp, General Engineering for the Upper Broadway Bike Lane, Schnell School Road to Point View Drive Project. And two, approve contract amendment number seven with REY Engineers for the cultural resource documentation for Upper Broadway Bike Lane, Schnell School Road, the Point View Drive Project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And this evening, Ms. Neves has this report for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Saragosa and Vice Mayor Thomas, members of the council. The item before you proposes to ratify construction contract change orders one through nine in a combined credit of seven hundred ninety seven thousand dollars and four hundred and eighty four, forty, forty four, excuse me. And the amendment previously mentioned with REY Engineers for Cultural Resource Documentation, the amount of one hundred and thirty nine thousand, four hundred and twenty one. Construction of this project began, as you may know, in January, end of January. And it proposes to construct a new bicycle and pedestrian facilities from Schnell School Road to Point View Drive on Broadway. As work has progressed, change orders have become necessary to address differing site conditions along with project challenges and opportunities. The change orders listed and described in detail in staff's report, the most noteworthy are change orders four and nine that provide a project credit in the total amount of eight hundred fifty six thousand, eight hundred eighty four dollars. Change order number eight removed retaining wall number one from the project due to the inadvertent discovery of a cultural resource in the nearby vicinity of a wall that was previously environmentally cleared for excavation and construction. When the city was identified, was notified of the potential resource, the city did halt the work in the immediate vicinity in accordance with the project environmental document and the construction contract. The project's archaeologists did an initial site assessment and confirmed that there is a resource located in that vicinity. The city is grateful to the Wapoomisneesonawmewak tribe for notifying us of this resource. It afforded the city an opportunity to refrain from proceeding with construction of the wall, which was previously environmentally cleared. And construction of said wall would have, as a fully cleared improvement, excavated into that resource. The city does care about all resources and we're grateful for being afforded the opportunity to avoid damage to that resource. Determined, determined to avoid that damage, the project team also chose to look at this as a blessing and an opportunity. We put our thinking caps on and developed an alternative roadway section that not only, it slightly reduces the width of the overall roadway section, but it also avoids impact to the area of the cultural resource. And thus, the retaining wall was removed at the credit of three hundred ninety nine thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, while still maintaining the ability to construct intended facilities. And one success often leads to another. The team was further encouraged to relook at the corridor as a whole and apply the same reduced width section to areas that were turning out to be problematic to construct. One such area was that retaining wall number three located at the Smith Flat Road intersection. As construction progressed, the contractor informed the team that acquiring materials for retaining wall number three, which is the soldier pile wall, was turning out to be problematic due to COVID nineteen restrictions. This became another opportunity. And after field assessments and staking and looking it over thoroughly with the design team, the contractor and the construction management team, a reduced width section was also, became a viable alternative to, at that intersection. And it allowed the retaining wall number three to be removed also. And that one resulted in a credit of four hundred fifty seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. For those who are curious, the reason why these two walls were originally included in the project is because, as I indicated, they afforded more spacious and uniform bike lane and pedestrian facilities width throughout the project corridor. They also provided a degree of flexibility for the future to slightly widen in those areas for additional improvements should it be needed. However, it's not necessarily economical, economically viable for the city to pay a designer to come up with all kinds of creative and capture creative design possibilities. So sometimes utilizing a contractor's needs and methods will favor a particular approach. And this is why our contract specifications, that are the state standard specifications, do allow for contractor proposed improvements through what's known as the Value Engineering Change Proposal or V E C P process. This allows the contractor to propose changes which adhere to certain parameters that result in an overall cost savings to the project. This spec does allow flexibility in the contract for a public owner to take advantage of that cost savings opportunity. And again, you know, it may not be economically viable to look at other design alternatives during design, but it does afford an opportunity to become more creative once you're in construction. So in making this creative change, the city has also made some concessions in the overall roadway section by allowing a reduced width where necessary. When faced with a wider roadway section over the option of a reduced roadway section that still functions well to serve all modes of transportation while protecting a resource, the city was only made recently aware of its whereabouts as a resource. The city did make the decision based on its values of protecting cultural and historic resources as its primary interest and went with the reduced roadway section. Majority of the credit realized as part of change orders eight and nine will actually be rolled back into the project to add value for the community, including but not limited to additional bike and pedestrian facilities and additional roadway and utility improvements that further support the longevity of the road and the bike and the pedestrian facilities within this segment of the corridor. However, a portion of the credits from change orders eight and nine will be applied to the proposed amendment before you this evening to REY to properly document and record the inadvertent discovery of the cultural resource during construction for present and future protection. Had it not been for the creativity of the project team and staff to find the savings, funding the effort to properly document and protect the resource at this late stage in the game during construction would have likely had to come from another local funding source, potentially even the general fund. So the level of effort and the scope of work was developed under guidance from SHPO, Caltrans and Caltrans Cultural Studies Office to include all that is required to properly document, record and submit the necessary information to the plate, to, to place it on the confidant, excuse me, confidential register through California Historical Resources Information System, known as the CHRIS system, and is presented tonight as an attachment to staff's report as part of the requested amendment. Staff's recommendations on the change orders and amendment requests are summarized in the report. This concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Do we have any colleagues, do you have any questions or comments at this point for staff? Yes, council member Taylor. Oh, you're mute.
Quick comment, this is, you know, another week that our engineering departments brought back major savings in the projects. So just want to give you a shout out, Rebecca. And thank you for, you know, for you and your department for always being creative and finding solutions that save the city and taxpayers a lot of money. I'm, I've got a couple of quick questions as well. I'm just kind of curious about what the change order biohazard on change order number one, what the biohazard was. And then, you know, just looking at these alternatives, do you feel like we're ending up with a better project? Or do you feel like it's less good than what was originally planned with these change orders?
Great question. So change order number one was actually due to cleaning up of biohazard related to a homeless encampment. And that was just prior to tree clearing. There was a small area that did need to get cleared. A great job of assisting with us, just notifying the folks that were living up there saying, hey, temporarily, we got to move you from this space because here's the work we're doing, you know, and we actually even roped it off. And, and they, they did a great job. They relocated a majority of their tents, but they left a fair amount of things behind. And that was the expense of that. However, I do want to note too that change order number one is ten thousand dollars is a force account. So what that actually means is just like a budgetary amount. We aren't even probably going to get close to that amount. So the actual resultant change order will be probably substantially less. But it's a, it's a quick way to get a placeholder and then we just bill at time of materials. So, and then your second question is, do we feel we'll be getting a better project? Absolutely. So there's been a lot of creative ideas on how to spend the new savings into the project. One of my favorite is we, you know, when we were first looking at this project and how much funding we had available. You know, this project is funded through the ATP program, the Active Transportation Program, through the state and federal. Actually, we were recipients of two rounds of ATP. So we were kind of the, a little bit of the envy of the Seco group. So it was, it was very blessed for that. But we didn't have enough money to do sidewalk all on Broadway. We actually didn't have enough money to do sidewalk for majority of Broadway. However, we were able to get pedestrian paths adjacent to the bike lanes. But with this savings, we are able to add in sidewalk in some heavily traveled areas. One of the areas that we looked at and that we are currently in the process of getting change order amount quotes for is sidewalk in front of the area from Hangtown Range all the way towards the end of that commercial zone there by Creekside. And that is a pretty heavily traveled corridor. We actually have our construction meetings out there in the weekend. There is a steady stream of pedestrians coming through there. And so it'd be nice to get them, you know, out of the parking lot, which tends to be pretty busy, and off of the roadside, which also tends to be busy and happens to be one of the few straightaways on Broadway. So people tend to speed a little bit. And then another improvement that we're looking at is, you know, you know, the best way to support a good bicycle facility is to have a good road. And so we're looking at opportunities for rehabbing the roads in that area. One of them that desperately needs it is Smith Flat Road. And another is there's some pretty troublesome areas at Schnell School Road as well. And we're looking at doing a type two slurry at Point View just to kind of preserve its, its good condition. We are also adding in some additional ADA path of travel and ramps at the intersection of Point View as well. So there's a lot of good that's coming out of this, you know, so it's very, it's, it's exciting to see the positive progress that this project is evolving into, so.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up public comment on twelve point one.
Now taking public comment from Galaxy A five one.
Good evening. A five one, you're still on mute.
Let's move to Colin user four.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay, so a few questions. So this whole project is called the Upper Broadway Bicycle and Pedestrian Project, for lack of a better, perfect term. Right, so you got federal funding because you're going to build bike lanes and sidewalks. Now you're reducing the bike lanes and the sidewalks. So question one is, are you at risk for having to return federal money because you're decapitating bike lanes and sidewalks? The other question is, so the retaining wall, I'm going to try and be sensitive to not point out an archaeological site. The old house that had a driveway that approached it from the west side? All of a sudden, a new driveway was authorized to go down the east side. That was outside the project scope as far as I know it. Who authorized Doug Vierkamp, the contractor, who's innocent in this, to produce that east side driveway that destroyed these archaeological site? Because that's where it starts. And then now, it seems like everyone's trying, at the city, engineering department is trying to figure out how to CYA. And I just despise all the glorious language of, oh, this is just a perfect chance for us to all figure out how to make a more beautiful project. I really think you need to look at firing Rebecca Neves, the city engineer, and getting somebody else more competent in there. Who authorized that east side driveway that destroyed archaeological sites? And now you're having to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to register and.
One minute.
Just figure it out. So somebody messed up, somebody authorized the contractor to build that east side driveway out of that house. destroying these sites. It wasn't in the scope of project. You're totally in violation of your environmental document and now you're scrambling to try and CYA. So I'm upset. Somebody, the city engineer, has cost the city a lot of money. And maybe you should start to try and find a replacement. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Last call for item 12.1. We'll take comment from eight four six.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, it's Jennifer. So actually Regina was going to read my letter. And I'm not sitting in front of it, so I'm going to have to try to paraphrase it. But the essence of the letter which you all, at least the city council folks got, was to basically clarify that, you know, the city manager's report on this goes on and on about how, you know, the only tribe that you can consult with is the so-called legally recognized tribe, which is fine, you know, and my letter explained how this Wapoomis tribe does have a history and should be recognized by the city and that the city does have, yes?
Jennifer, I have your letter in front of me if you'd like me to read it. I was going to.
Okay, okay, that's great. I didn't realize. So thanks. Thanks. I would rather if you read it. And so hopefully these seconds won't count.
Okay, sure. I'll go ahead and read it now.
Yep, go ahead Regina.
Okay. Dear Mayor Sarah Goosam, Placerville City Council, in item 12.1 on tonight's agenda, you have an ethical issue before you regarding how to proceed with an archaeological resource within the Upper Broadway Bike Lanes Project. Regarding the city manager's statement that this was an undocumented resource, please note that it was in fact well-known by some people, including Kirk Smith, the property owner and members of the Wapoomis tribe. The area of potential effect delineated in the project drawings did not include the location or its presence would have been brought forth. Reference to this resource was also made to the city on June 6, 2018, during consultation with Friends of Historic Hangtown about the Clay Street Bridge project with city staff in Caltrans. The following statement about the potential impacts of the Clay Street Bridge project was made verbally and provided in writing before the discovery of gold, the Nisamewak Indians and possibly other tribes as well used Hangtown Creek for water and watershed resources. A grinding stone east of Clay Street attests to this. As a public agency, I believe that any jurisdiction or property rights the city has with this archaeological site means the city should also carefully consider all Native American claims, whether are a registered tribe or not. It is common knowledge that Native Americans in California were rapidly displaced and severely impacted by the surge in California immigrants associated with the discovery of gold in 1848. The Wapoomis have been diligently pursuing the reinstatement of their registered status with the United States Office of Federal Acknowledgement, OFA, and have met with the Native American Heritage Commission several times about placement on the AB 52 list. The tribe reports that the NAHC indicated that they didn't have a process to register tribes to the AB 52 list, and they didn't have the staff to process the paperwork. This brings us to the city's own authority and jurisdiction. There were 18 treaties made with tribes in California that were not ratified by Congress that were addressed in a case before the US Court of Claims that you should become familiar with. One of these was the 1851 Consumnis River Treaty that the Wapoomis tribe was a signatory on. The Wapoomis have a well-documented history in Eldorado County. Regardless of delayed action by the Office of Federal Acknowledgement or the Native American Heritage Commission, the city can and should recognize the Wapoomis tribe for the purpose of consultation status under SEQA in all project planning within the city. Caltrans, with delegated authority from the Federal Highway Administration, should do the same under NEPA, which is part of the environmental compliance framework for the Upper Broadway Bike Lanes Project, the Clay Street Bridge Project and the multitude of other federally funded transportation projects in Eldorado County. I ask and recommend that you retract the following statement from the city manager's report for item 12.1, since the question of legal eligibility remains unresolved by deliberation of OFA and NAHC. And here's the statement. Unfortunately, due to their lack of registered status, they are not legally eligible to claim cultural ownership nor jurisdiction to the resource and at the direction of California Native American Heritage Commission to the city, they are considered members of the public only and not a recognized tribe. I further ask and recommend that the city become acquainted with the history of Shingle Springs Band of Mewoc Indians. The Wapoomis have demonstrated that this tribe traces to Sutter and Yolo Counties. While the law may require the city to recognize the Shingle Springs Band of Mewoc Indians, there is no law that the city cannot also recognize the Wapoomis Nisamewak Tribe of Eldorado County. I ask that you consider the law of conscience and allow the Wapoomis to have recognition equal to the Shingle Springs Band and do not award the contract for archaeological survey as written tonight. I am furthermore CCing Caltrans, the Eldorado Transportation Commission and the Eldorado County Board of Supervisors, asking that they also consider the information herein and that they also recognize the Wapoomis tribe for matters within their respective jurisdictions. Please also review this summary of a recent presentation by the Wapoomis tribe regarding the archaeological site within the Upper Broadway Bike Lanes Project. And then she includes a PowerPoint presentation and she says sincerely, Jennifer Chapman, Placerville resident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment from Sue Reese.
Good evening, Sue. Sue, you're still on mute.
There you go.
Yep.
I inadvertently hit the raise hand button. I have no comment.
No problem. Thank you.
Sorry.
Take public comment from Ruth.
Hi, Regina, were you going to read my letter or should I just go ahead and paraphrase it?
Ruth, I can go ahead and read it.
All right. Thank you so much. I'll get off then. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to go ahead and read all of these and then we'll see who's left, who would like to speak. So.
Okay.
Okay, so the next comment, well, let's do Ruth's first, since she's on. Give me just one moment here. There's several. Okay. Dear city staff, my first questions have to do with contract change orders. Number eight and number nine, the elimination of the retaining walls. These two change orders result in a very large project savings. The first, almost $400,000, and the second, about $457,000. Together, that's almost $1 million. Both of these savings are being accomplished through developing an alternative roadway section. The need to look for one of these alternatives become apparent due to a potential cultural resource. The second retaining wall was problematic due to lack of building material during COVID-19. Staff and the project team reevaluated the intersection of Smith Flat Road, found an alternative solution and omitted the retaining wall. My question is, why were these retaining walls part of the original design if they could later be creatively omitted? That seems like a lot of extra taxpayer money to be spent that didn't need to be spent if that creativity had been applied originally. I'm sure there's a logical reason why the alternative alignment wasn't recommended from the beginning and I'm curious to know what it is. I'm also interested in CCO number one and what biohazard was discovered that took $10,000 to remove. And contract change order number two, how long and with what equipment did it take to remove blackberry bushes at the cost of $5,000? While we're talking about construction in the area of the retaining walls, others have brought these questions to my attention and I will now pose them to you. Isn't the city supposed to have permits, drawings and descriptions to disclose to the public when they are working on private property? Why was the city digging a driveway on such and such, I'm not going to give the address, when previously there was nothing indicated in the ISMND that the property boundaries would be infringed? Why didn't the city have an archaeological study done on that property? I sincerely appreciate your answers to these questions, Ruth Michelson. So let me just go back. I have a public comment from the Wapoomis Tribal Council. The Wapoomis Tribal Council declares the following. The Wapoomis tribe is the Aboriginal tribe of Eldorado County, signing the Consumnis River Treaty in 1851, are issued BIA Mewoc Identification Papers and have over 150 years of local and federal records in Eldorado County, including exhibits and Eldorado County museums. The Wapoomis tribe requests the city grant them tribal consultation status with rights to access and study their own sacred site as described in AB 52. The Wapoomis is the party who alerted the city, Rebecca Neves, of the resource and requested a project halt for further study. This site has been under the protection of the Wapoomis for over 100 years. This site was not known to the city or discovered by the city. It was indicated in the 106 session for Clay Street. The Wapoomis have a report from UC Davis and will disclose that report to the city of Placerville after an MOU with the city of Placerville has been reached. The UC Davis report states that the site is a significant village site deserving of further study and eligible for listing in the California Register of Historic Resources. With permission from the property owner, the Wapoomis brought out professors of archaeology from UC Davis on Saturday, April 18, 2020, to photograph and inventory the site. AB 52 is designed to protect non-federally recognized tribes in matters of SEQA. It has provisions for allowing indigenous groups and individuals to participate in tribal consultation matters with local governments. A tribal group or individual does not have to be on the state list or to be federally recognized as Aboriginal to a particular sacred site. Aboriginal groups can be locally recognized by their local group and considered authorities for SEQA in matters related to their territory. Aboriginal tribes supersede federally recognized, regards to Aboriginal sacred sites. Federally tribes only have jurisdiction over their own rancheria/trust property as they may not be indigenous to the area they have been located to. A federally recognized tribe does not supersede an Aboriginal tribe due to the doctrine of Aboriginal title and the Aboriginal tribe should be consulted as per AB 52. The city and Rebecca Neves has not produced a letter from the NAHC directing them or advising them in the details she describes. Rebecca Neves' reports of discussions with the NAHC is hearsay. The Native American Historic Resource Protection Act establishes a misdemeanor for unlawfully and maliciously excavating upon removing, destroying, injuring or defacing a Native American historic cultural or sacred site that is listed or may be eligible for listing in the California Register of Historic Resources. Currently, the city is in violation because they were illegally digging on that property. The Red Hot Casino Group, also known as the Sacramento Verona Band, calling themselves Shingle Springs Band of Mewoc Indians, is from Sutter County and not indigenous to Eldorado County. The doctrine of Aboriginal title does not apply to them in any instance in Eldorado County. Numerous emails have been sent to Rebecca regarding the Wapoomis tribe's request for the sacred site, including a description of the credentials of the UC Davis professors and an in-camera view to the city council of federal records proving that the Wapoomis are the Aboriginal tribe. The city needs to defer to the Wapoomis on their sacred site, including them in the studies as tribal monitors and allow them to bring their own UC Davis archaeologists to conduct their own dig survey. Thank you, the Wapoomis Tribal Council. Let's see. Okay, this is from Louis Smith III of the Wapoomis tribe. He writes, the Wapoomis tribe has federal papers documenting them as Mewocs from Eldorado County. The city did not have sign off from any tribe to be on that sacred site property. The Wapoomis have offered a tribal monitor and the tribe has made it known to Rebecca Neves that we have university credentialed archaeologists with a federally registered repository for artifacts available to survey our sacred site. I'm also including this response because it will probably come up too. It'll probably come up. First of all, I did not publicly disclose the sacred site location prior to city staff giving copies of the tribe's public records request to the Mountain Democrat on Monday, April 20. On Monday, April 20, Pat Licky first received the location from that public records request as she states in the article, Historic Rock Grinds Broadway Project to a Halt. The article in the last paragraph states that she got the address from a public records request. The city delivers public records request to the Mountain Democrat weekly for publication. City staff could easily have redacted the address and owner information on that public records request prior to giving it to Pat Licky. April 21, 7:52 AM, Tuesday morning, was the first communication the tribe had with Pat Licky from the Mountain Democrat. Pat Licky made an inquiry of the tribe's email box requesting that the tribe's side of the story regarding the Upper Broadway Project being halted for an Indian grinding rock. It was evident from her email that Licky already had a considerable amount of information from the city about the site, including the location and walked the property prior to her inquiry. The tribe's official response to her inquiry was at 9:57 AM. My email sees work warning to the city attorney that Pat Licky was copied on was sent April 21 at 10:15 AM after our response to her inquiry was already emailed much earlier and it became apparent that the city had already disclosed the address to the Mountain Democrat. Rebecca Neves owes myself, the tribe and the public an apology for not getting her facts straight before trash talking the tribe on Zoom at the previous city council meetings. And that's it from Louis Smith. The next comment is from Julie LaChappelle. Thank you for allowing my input into this important meeting. I really didn't think the denial of recognition of an indigenous tribe, their heritage, artifacts and their original communities could ever become the question of destroy it or save it. Who in the world would ever think it's okay to ignore their historical knowledge and their importance in this county by wiping out this part of their past, a part of California history? Who in the world would ever think it's okay to ask a non-indigenous loose band of Indians from an outside county with absolutely no real depth of knowledge of these Indian communities to be allowed to say, nope, there's nothing here relating to any Indian life here. Go ahead and excavate, boys. Please recognize, protect and keep this land and artifacts for our future lovers of our county's history. Respectfully, Julie LaChappelle from Shingle Springs, California. The next one is from Sandra Cooperman. Please respect their culture, their rights and their sacred site. This is part of California history too. Thank you. And then we've already read the one from Ruth. This one is from Susan Johnson. She says, I was born in Placerville and raised in Eldorado County. My Native American family has lived in this county for over 150 years. We are documented by the BIA and before records were kept, our family signed the 1851 Consumnis River Treaty. Our great, great, great grandfather is then the Smithsonian Institute from Eldorado County. Our families are in the Eldorado County Museum and we have family cemeteries, roads in our names. Our grandfathers are buried here. We are the indigenous tribe of Eldorado County because our identity has been stolen. We've been denied our rights. It's time to recognize the true tribe in this city. Sincerely, Susie Tripp. And last comment is from Larry Johnson. He writes, my name is, oh, sorry. This is actually from Erin Dixon. My name is Erin Dixon and I am the tribal chairperson for the Wapoomis Mewoc. The Eldorado Indian Council was established by my great-grandmother, Lorna Tripp, and her sisters, my great aunts. Many of my cousins are council members today. We all have documentation that goes back to the Gold Rush and beyond. We are not obstructionist, but we demand fair treatment from the city and county governments. Not special treatment, but fair unbiased treatment. We have Aboriginal rights and they have been violated. It is a violation of the law to have Native Americans from outside Eldorado County inspecting potential sites when they have no historical connection to this county. It is required to post notification of all projects that may require inspection before any work is done. Not after you start. We have found no place where such notice for the Upper Broadway was done. We think you could have saved the city thousands of dollars if given the recognition for any future sites. In order to guarantee fairness, we will bring in archaeologists from UC Davis to verify any of our findings. If you don't think we would be fair, surely you would trust UC Davis archaeologists to render fair and unbiased reporting. To use outside inspectors and to deny our indigenous status can only be seen as an attempt to manipulate the statutes of government codes. And Mr. Mayor, we have Galaxy A51 raising their hand again. We also have
I'm going to just skip over that one. I'm not sure what's going on there, but we've had five tries. I'm not looking for a sixth try.
Totally understand. So let's move to Jane McGinnis. Go ahead.
Ms. McGinnis, you're still on mute.
All right, then I will, I will take last call for this item, for item 12.1. Jane, if you're still there, please unmute yourself. Okay, Mr. Mayor, um, no further public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you, Regina, and thank you for all your work on reading through those and also taking phone calls at the same time. So appreciate all your hard work that you're doing this evening for us. Okay, so there's a lot to unpack there. And the first thing I want to do and say is that our city engineer does an absolutely terrific job for us. And the fact that we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars on this project is testament to that as well as on other projects as well, where we've been able to define savings. So I just want to assure her that the the council is appreciates your hard work and everything you put into this despite some of the the personal attacks on you tonight. So I just wanted to put out that there first. So with that, I know there were some very specific questions in regards to this project from the public. I know some of those you had already made mention to in your previous comments, but if you don't mind to go over the, just quickly, the the change orders and the 10,000 on the cleanup, just quickly, since we already said that. And then we can get into some of the more other questions that have arisen. Patty?
I'm just wondering if Rebecca could just give a really short synopsis of what this is all about. There might be folks out there that just don't understand this at all. So just really, just a quick synopsis of what.
So just so I'm clear on the question that you're asking, Patty, are you talking about the process or are you talking about?
The project.
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, I kind of want to go back to one comment that was made that really kind of spoke to the federal funding on the project and what is the project, right? So you obtain federal funding, you actually have to go through an effort where you go through, especially with ATP, you go through pretty extensive application process. And then one thing to recognize about our application is that the definition of the project is the project provides strategically located sidewalks and additional pedestrian improvements. So, you know, some of the concerns regarding the reduced roadway width section, it's actually, it's still providing the same facilities. So instead of like a seven foot bike lane, we have a five foot bike lane. So I mean, you know, you're not losing the proposed facility is what I'm getting at. So as far as at risk of losing those federal funds, we're actually in accordance with the definition or I guess the purpose and need description of the project. And then as far as the change orders, I, as far as change order one goes, I touched on that briefly regarding the biohazard with the $10,000 amount that was actually cleanup of remaining debris from a homeless encampment that had been temporary relocated to allow for the tree clearing for safety precautions in the area. And then change order number two, which was $5,000 related to Blackberry Bush clearing. That one was actually a result of us needing to remove the Blackberry Bush by hand. So they were in a fairly sensitive biological area and it was for a pretty decent stretch of the creek. And, you know, there was a combination of you couldn't really get a piece of equipment back in there in order to do it and not have it be, you know, kind of disturbing the area. So that was something to to kind of speak to. And then, so I mean, it ended up being required to have it be hand removed in the sensitive area, basically to reduce the amount of ground disturbance. And then regarding, let's see, some of the questions were, let's see, one thing that I kind of saw as a reoccurring theme regarding, you know, some of the comments in the letters was, I just really want to clarify on what kind of opportunity a project has to receive public comment and also any kind of information for resources that might be out there. So, you know, this project went through an environmental clearance process and the planning environmental clearance process, it did last for several years, you know, and there are numerous avenues a person can provide public comment or information. One of them is actually becoming a consulting party under section 106 or AB 52 if they're allowed to be. So section 106 and 8052 kind of have different definitions on how your consultation levels are allowed. Then the other is, it did hold actually several public and community project, which we have actually photocopies of all the comment cards and everything still too. And a city council meetings, both as an agendized, so I'm sorry, our automatic plates are turning off. So as both a agendized item and under public comment and then, you know, circulation of the environmental document and public comment period also affords an opportunity to provide that input. And then honestly, reaching out to city staff, we're available all the time, you know, emails or phone calls. So as far as that, you know, the the first mention of the location of the resource was in April of this year. So, you know, that was how it was discovered. And furthermore, the resource is actually discovered above the roadway. So, and I do kind of want to speak to where the concept of the driveway came about. I mentioned earlier the V E C P process. So the V E C P process allows the contractor to propose alternate improvements. And when that happens, the designer for the contractor kind of takes ownership of that portion of the design. So what they, what they will do is if they're going on private property or they have a variation from the plans, they actually work with the property owner for permission, for approval of the plan to the point where Veer Camp actually hired their own engineer. Now, I want to go back to also the understanding that this project was environmentally cleared, which means if the contractor had not done a V E C P, we would have had 100% will been within our rights to excavate a net rock if we didn't know about it and we didn't know about it. So then the question becomes, how do you know about things like this to avoid them from being damaged in construction? Well, the best and most effective way is to do what we're doing now. And that is recording and documenting the resource and getting it on a register so that when 25 years down the line, somebody decides to do a project in the same area, they look it up on the Chris system, it comes up. They say, hey, there's a resource here. And they say, oh, okay, let's avoid it. Don't touch it. Instead of kind of the inadvertent discovery route that we've now found ourselves in. So, um, as far as, let me see some other comments. Oh, I did want to kind of go back to Ruth's email. Bear with me, I'm reading in the dark here. Um, so there was also a comment pertaining to, um, let me pull it up here. Sorry. Um, it was pertaining to, you know, was there an archaeological survey done? And this speaks to the resource. Yes, an archaeological survey report was absolutely completed and it was approved for the project in November of 2017. So that's over two years ago. We're working on three now. And at that
Who does, who does those? Who's the archaeologist? Is it through the state that you?
Both, actually. And so we have an archaeologist on our team. We work with
Uh-oh, we lost you.
Uh-oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you back.
Okay, sorry. Um, so we actually do have an archaeologist. And we work with HDR, who is a sub to REY on this contract. They're actually going to be receiving a fair amount of them and because their work is contained within that scope. So the archaeological survey and the report were indeed completed and approved for the project in November 2017. So working on almost three years ago. And at that time, the proposed project did not encroach into the property, but the access to the private property was not obtained and therefore the archaeologist is conducting the field review does that private property. Unfortunately, the inadvertent discovery potential of cultural resource was only visible from the private property. So as it sits above the road and behind vegetation. So as part of the archaeological report, a record search is in the Chris system is conducted and it was received and it did not any indicate any potential or documented resources in that area of the inadvertent discovery. The inadvertent discovery was made post environmental clearance and during construction. And anyone having knowledge of that site potential resource didn't notify the city or to, you know, prior to the April 16th notification. So that's kind of where the inadvertent discovery was made during active construction. And let's see, I have a whole bunch here. Um, so, and then one thing was, so let's see if I covered Ruth's email here. Covered CCO one and two, and the work is performed on the private property was proposed by the contractor as part of the value engineering cost proposal that I mentioned. And it is within the contract documents and specifications to allow that as a mechanism. And the improvement plans were developed by the contractors engineer presented to the city under administration of the contract. So the, and then the other response to some of the comments received for, I'll respond to, let's see, actually, I'll respond to one of the comments from Ms. Ms. Chapman's email. So, you know, wanting to retract the statement that lack of registered status. So without getting into the finer points of sequa and NEPA, it's, I want to clarify that, you know, the statement that was made in the staff report that stated unfortunately, due to the lack of registration status, they're not legally eligible to claim cultural ownership nor jurisdiction of the resource at the direction in the California Native American Heritage Commission to the city. They are considered members of the public only and not a recognized tribe. A couple of things to clarify on that. City staff and the project team and Caltrans was all on the call with the Native American Heritage Commission. So unfortunately, it's not hearsay. It's about 20 people say. So I just want to clarify that, you know, that direction was given loud and clear to not just the city, it was with Caltrans too. So it might be, it's also good to clarify that, you know, the Wapoomnus may have cultural ties to it and we're not denying that part of it. And the knowledge about the archaeological site and that the information is welcomed. We welcome it as part of this process and the city is, you know, but the city is required to implement this process. And, you know, we recognize, you know, the background and the history that the tribe has provided, although they are not on the NAHC list. And why this list is important is in order to be consulting through sequa or as defined in AB 52, the Califor- as a California Native American tribe. That means that the Native American tribe located on in California has to be on the contact list that is maintained by the Native American Heritage Commission. The city does not have a dog in that fight. We don't make this list. We are told to follow it and sequa tells us to follow it. And so as far as that part of it, although the NAHC, you know, they're not currently on the NAHC list. They are, they, you know, we are considering them an interested party with knowledge of the site and we have been collecting that data from them. But formal consultation with the tribe does need to follow formal consultation process. And the city is conducting that with interested parties and other interested parties as part of the city's requirements under sequa and NHPA section 106. So that kind of covers a couple of one thing that actually that was stated in the Wapoomnus email that just for clarification and purpose, it was stated that they had that they had site with the property owner's permission on April 18th. I spoke with the property owner today and they have never had permission to be on that site. So the credentialed archaeologists that attended with them on that date, unfortunately, they, they, none of them had permission to be on that site and the property owner is a little frustrated about it actually. But we, I, we, we don't know what circumstance led to getting them, you know, necessarily there in that moment, but I just wanted to clarify that statement. And then uh, let's see, there's some comment, there was some comment regarding AB 52 and excavating your resources, Mr. Mayor. That kind of could be addressed at a later date with the reports. Am I missing anything? Covered a bunch.
I think you've covered quite a bit there, Rebecca. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm gonna go back to my colleagues here for any additional questions. I will, just one thing for my part. I mean, there would have been multiple opportunities for anyone that had knowledge of 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 this site as an indigenous archaeological site to to bring this forward over at least what, two years? If that's, if my math is right there. So they, there would have been multiple opportunities to do that, but this wasn't, it didn't happen until we were well into the construction project here, which didn't come up in our archaeological. Oh, yep, go ahead, Rebecca.
Clarification, they, it was loosely mentioned in a section 106 consultation meeting for Clay Street as being potentially an impacted site as part of that project. But we were relieved, you know, when Jennifer Chapman went ahead and clarified that it's actually, this is the site, the one that's on Broadway, was the one that they were referring to in the Clay Street section 106 meeting. So that was great because now we don't have to worry about finding it as part of Clay Street. So there's the silver lining of that.
Okay. Uh, so colleagues, questions, comments, Patty?
I still, Rebecca, I'd like to go back to, because I keep talking about the property owners. And I have watched that house sit there and deteriorate for years and years and years. There was nobody in that house, right? So, I mean, you weren't talking to the owner through the front door when you corresponded. How, who? Tell me about the property owner and your, your.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, so a couple of things. And out of the respect for the property owner, I'm not going to state if it's occupied or not. And that's, you know, something that has been, you know, it's something that they haven't been crazy about. So out of respect for them, I'm not going to comment on that. However, as I mentioned, through the V E C P process, they were actually contacted by the contractor. And the contractor got their contact information. And then when we were notified of the potential resource, we literally dropped everything and asked Veer Camp, you know, hey, you gotta stop in this area. And also another part of the clarification, the driveway actually misses the resource.
Right.
So it actually, we never dug into it, but had we not done, you know, had, had, have they not gone through that effort? We would have absolutely been excavating directly into it for the rock. So, but, but the contractor actually had the property owner's contact information and let him know what was going on. And then we met out at the site twice on April 16th of this year. One around noon and then one around four o'clock. And the four o'clock meeting included our project archaeologist. And when he arrived on site, you know, we walked the site and the Wapoomnus tribe was with us on both instances. And they left and actually the archaeologist was finishing up his site assessment. He wasn't really afforded a great opportunity during the meeting to do so. So he was following up with his notes and and things. And as we were all kind of packing up to leave, the property owner walks up and he says, hey, this is my property. And so we actually had an opportunity to walk his whole property with him and have further discussions on about. And he's very, very good, very patient, very kind man, had lots of great information on the parcel. You know, he got it from his uncle. And so that's kind of where the history of that came about. And we've been coordinating with him and his niece fairly regularly.
Good.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, council member Taylor.
One caller mentioned the historic resources being damaged during this. Were the resources actually damaged?
So, yes, by, unfortunately, by the Wapoomnus tribe. So when we went out there, I go back to, we didn't actually touch any of the the cultural resource with any teeth bucket, you know, but her teeth on the buckets or anything like that. But our archaeologist, part of the reason why I meant, I made mention of, he wasn't able to do a site assessment is every, this was, and I kind of want to frame the time of it too. So it's April 16th, you know, everything shut down. There's a lot of uncertainties with COVID. Everybody's being very cautious about being physically distanced. Our archaeologist showed up with his face mask. And it's, it feels even more intense than it is right now. And, you know, he had gotten out intense than it is right now. And, um, you know, he had gotten out there and we went out there and met with, um, folks from the tribe, uh, all of which, uh, the folks that were out there actually provided comment this evening. And, um, he had asked them, you know, hey, you know, can you please, you know, respect my space so that I can actually, you know, assess this? And, um, that he was not afforded that opportunity. Um, and then one of the members of the tribe actually took a piece of wood from a pallet that was sitting there and proceeded to excavate directly into the resource, which actually damages the integrity of the resource. And, um, the archaeologist, uh, notated it and it's, um, documented. Uh, we actually had a video of it. Um, so unfortunately, um, that's something I, and we, we were asked to share the video to Caltrans and we did that, uh, in accordance with, um, some of the things that they've requested as far as further documentation. So, um, the answer to that question is accidentally. I don't, you know, not intentionally. I, it was, um, damaged by, uh, the group that cherishes.
Thanks. Hey, um, any other comp, uh, yes, Vice Mayor?
Um, the, the, the issue of the road being for the, uh, the, the east side driveway being cut in, is that, was that part of the construction?
As far as, um, what, it went through the V ECP process. It's kind of this anomaly within the contract. Um, but yeah, I mean, at that point, it gets rolled into the contract as a contract item.
Okay.
Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Taylor?
I have a question maybe for John Driscoll, um, unless Rebecca needs, you know the answer to this, but just want to confirm that the city does not have the discretion to recognize the, this band of Mewox as a consulting partner? Is that the case?
We don't have, my understanding from what, um, commission told us was that we can't recognize them as a section 106 consulting party because they're not registered. And that's correct, Rebecca, that, that's what they said, right? So, I mean, we can treat them as the public and consulting interested party member of the public, but we can't, uh, under AB 52, uh, recognize them because they're not registered. Now, that's what the commission has told us.
Okay. And then were they consulted as member of the public for this project formally? Or was there a process that they need to go through in order for that to happen?
So in order to be a consulting party, all you would have to do is just basically during the time of the consultation process, send in a request. Um, they're actually a consulting party on another project, which, um, you know, we, uh, allow that in as well. Um, one clarification, you know, under, um, uh, the determination of them, you know, becoming a tribe through the Native American Heritage Commission, um, the Native Heritage, uh, the Native American Heritage Commission actually contacted the city and said, hey, we've been getting a ton of emails, because I guess it was due to some Facebook post. And we've been getting a ton of emails. And what's this all about? They're not on our list. Who's saying that they're a registered tribe? And so we actually then, uh, had a discussion with Debbie Treadway with, of the NAHC and confirmed in that communications that the Wapoomis tribe is not a California Native American tribe under SEQUA. Now, are they a local tribe? Sure. Do they have vested interests? Absolutely. Have they been here? Probably. Absolutely. You know, so, um, I don't want to discount the value of their history to the area. I want to be clear about that. Um, but the Debbie Treadway did actually indicate that the tribe has been in communication with the NHC to get on that list, but that the process was never completed. So I would encourage any efforts, um, on their part to complete that process, you know? Um, I relate it to if the shoe was on the other foot and it was the Shingle Springs Band of Mewox that was saying, hey, we're the Aboriginal tribe, we're the ones that are supposed to be here and the Wapoomis were registered. And, you know, you have this group saying, no, 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 it's not these folks. But these folks have said, you know, we've already proven our heritage. We've gone through the process, you know, how would that feel? So, I mean, I kind of relate it to that way. So anyway, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Akuna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Rebecca, for, um, your detailed explanations as to what's going on and the history on this project. Um, I have a couple of questions. First of all, what's going to happen to the driveway that's currently just rough graded that, that was part of the discovery?
Um, so as far as the driveway goes, that's part, that's, uh, the next step is, you know, um, once we actually, now that we know that there's a resource, we assess the resource and the reach of the resource and document it and get it, um, recorded. Uh, and once we feel confident that what's remaining of the improvements doesn't affect that resource, we can commence with the resources. It essentially becomes secondary, um, cleared. The other, uh, part of that is that the only work that's really left to do is there's one excavation for culvert, because there's a drainage issue on the property as well, related to the drainage that comes off of Highway 50 and the culvert conveys the water and it takes into a DI nearby, um, on the roadside out Broadway. The other, uh, uh, improvement that's left is to basically rock the driveway with AB and pave it. So going up, not digging down. So that's the remaining work and that's the, the end goal. So we've, we've had a shuffle, uh, order of workaround on the job.
Okay. So it will eventually become a driveway?
Yes.
And in that completion, it will clear, um, any resources that are there?
Yes.
Okay. You have done a great job with the history and, um, you know, from a lot of the comments, having been involved in, in this, um, kind of watched as a bystander, I guess, there, I hear a lot of the same longstanding disputes. And, and you, one of your last comments about the existing tribes that are recognized versus those groups that are working to get their recognition and being respectful of those groups that have done all that work and, you know, created the documentation, um, to, to, um, create their place. Um, I think that is important to recognize that. And, and I hear a lot of that, a lot of the comments, it sounded like, um, you know, that's not an issue that the city can resolve as to who was here first. Um, and this goes way back to the very beginnings of when the casino was in that great big tent. And there was, there's been sadly a tremendous amount of legal work over the years, you know, in the county that, that, um, it's obviously impacting what's going on here with the city. Um, you, I'm, I'm not getting much metaversed on this. So we have the Native American Heritage Commission, and we have the Native American contact list. And neither, um, which this local group of, um, Wapoomis is not, uh, registered on or a member of. What seems, what is the holdup? Uh, they are so adamant about being part participants. Why are they not actively, you know, using the Jennifer Chapmans and the Kirk Smiths to get all of that, uh, registration taken care of?
Like, yes, to the means and methods. Yeah. Um, but we did ask that question because, you know, we do want to see folks, you know, I mean, we do federal and state paperwork all day. It's rough.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, we actually did ask the NAHC, we said, is there, you know, what's left? Like, you know, is there something that we could do? And they said, you know, they, in order to be placed on the AB 52 list, which is managed by the Native American Heritage Commission, they have to meet a criteria to get on that list. And they have not met that criteria. And I said, well, as, you know, we asked, we said, well, is there something we can help with? Is, what's missing? And they said, well, you know, unfortunately, the info that they've provided is confidential, so we can't release that. So when, kind of thinking to your point that the city, you know, really doesn't have any jurisdiction in that element.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that because it just further reiterates that this really is on them to go, to go and do that. And, um, and it makes, it also makes sense that it's confidential. This is, and it's well outside the average job of the city engineer. So I appreciate you, um, sticking with this particular question because it, um, it seems to be the common theme here for about the last year or two, um, that there's this big concern, uh, and we want to cooperate. There are mechanisms that, that, um, this group needs to get through so that they can get the proper recognitions. And then everybody, um, that's on the list or that's a part of this process, the information's going to flow to them just magnificently. But that's not something we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think, you know, we've been talking about this, I think for at least half an hour now. And the one thing I didn't want to lose sight of is that we've sort of become sidetracked because what we've all been talking about is not so much this project, but whether or not the Wapoomis tribe has some sort of, of, uh, recognition that really is not, I mean, it's related to this project, but not really. I mean, even their comments have nothing to do with the project in and of itself besides wanting to be a, uh, recognized party legally that we can't provide, uh, because both federal government and the state government have very clear guidelines as to who we have to notify and participate with. Uh, and so this has become less about the, this project, this whole conversation. And it has been about whether or not this particular tribe, uh, has jurisdiction. So I just wanted to kind of refocus us back. And I know we're responding to public comment, but, um, I, I don't recall them ever actually having a, a, an opinion on the project as opposed to just wanting to be a part of the process.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the item. And I would make the note that, um, 139,421 of this, um, requested amount is for cultural resource documentation. So, uh, this is an example of the funds that we are going to expend to document this resource that we accidentally discovered. So I, I, I would go ahead and move item 12.1, items 1 and 2.
I'll second that, Mark.
Hey, we have a first and a second. Uh, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, uh, Ms. McConnell, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Hi.
Councilmember Akuna?
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli? I'm sorry, was that?
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
The I and a half.
A and a half.
The little Taylor's.
She just made her vote, first vote.
All right. Well, that measure passes five zero. Again, Rebecca, thank you for the extra mile on this one. And, um, you know, we will continue on. Uh, so moving then on to item 12.2, uh, approve a no fee temporary sidewalk dining permit application and further direct staff to implement same, uh, temporary outdoor dining application utilizing, uh, private parking areas. Uh, and this is Mr. Rivas, uh, on this for us this evening. Uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, basically, the council had previously asked staff to prepare a no fee temporary sidewalk dining permit application. And then further directed staff to implement the same for also preparing a temporary use permit application for using private walkways and private parking lots. So what you have before you is a draft of the, uh, temporary use permit that we would utilize for using public space, meaning public sidewalks within the city right of way. Um, and this is all in, in regards to the COVID and entering to the stage two where restaurants can now reopen, but because of the physical distancing requirements and requirements from the health department that, um, they, for the most part, restaurants will have insufficient space to be able to provide for, um, the amount of, uh, customers to really have a viable operating kitchen operation. And so, uh, with providing them the ability to use, uh, the public space or to use private space in the case of private parking lots or walkways, uh, we think hopefully the restaurants will remain open as you probably already seen, some of them are already, uh, utilizing, uh, the concept, uh, to maintain the restaurants in a viable, uh, state of financial stability. Um, I don't have anything really further to add. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, thank you, Pierre. Uh, any questions or comments from, uh, council at this time? Uh, yes, uh, Councilmember Borelli?
Um, I, I got an email, I'm sure you all probably did about, and I, you know, I meant to, to pull it up and I forgot. Anyway, it's, uh, of a fellow, I don't know where he was from, but talking about the ADA requirements, because he understood we were going to do this. And he was cautioning us about doing the right thing. Did any of the rest of you get that email?
Not sure, but certainly.
I can comment on that.
Oh, I was gonna say, Pierre probably knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're probably, I'm sure the council is aware that we currently in our zoning code, we have a, uh, temporary use permit application for utilizing the, the sidewalk. So, uh, for example, Pizza Ben A, so he was able to establish an outdoor dining area subject to our temporary use permit. Under, under the city guidelines, um, we require five feet of minimum, um, space for pedestrian travel within the sidewalk. Under this temporary use permit under COVID, the, the no fee, uh, we reduce that to four feet or 48 inches. So that that is the minimum ADA travel width that's required. So that's measured from the edge of any barrier, any table or chair to the edge of the curb or any obstacle located within the sidewalk area.
Mayor and council, if I can add to that, the other piece there is, I believe what they're talking about, and I think I did get that email, Patty, also. They are talking about the fact that we were proposing to have the pedestrians walk out into the parking area. But that was proposed to be done where a, with a platform or a deck, if you will, that would make it ADA compliant, then walk out around into that area. So at no time were we proposing that someone would have to step off the curb because that would not be ADA compliant. So.
If I can just direct, uh, council members to, um, paragraph or actually, um, requirement letter E, that describes exactly the, uh, minimum width of travel that's required. And then there's a second paragraph in there that basically states, should the width of the sidewalk be an inadequate width to provide for the minimum four foot pathway, the restaurant may make application with the engineering department to install an extension of a sidewalk or boardwalk or the business frontage parking stall. Construction plan shall be submitted with a quotient permit subject to review and approval with city engineer. And that would also be a, uh, permit, uh, be, um, to be a free application to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Pierre.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions at this point? Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
I'm taking public comment on 12.2. Call in user four.
Good evening, council. So I assume that you should be familiar with, uh, zoning regulation, planning commission, how things are passed, how things are become law for our city. So the planning commission decided that they would allow the planning director to, uh, approve two small tables and two small chairs per business, right, over the counter. And I'm seeing a lot, I want the businesses thrived. So I don't want to be a nitpicker, but I'm just pointing out how things are not being followed to the code. And I have a semi problem with what you're proposing now, because there's no discussion of the existing ordinance. The existing dining ordinance allows the director, Rivas, to approve two small tables and two small chairs each. Other than that, it has to go to the planning commission. Planning commission has been vacant for months. No chance for the public to put in input as the normal process goes. And tonight, it looks like you're trying to override that. Um, there, I'm kind of confronted with the state of emergency. The state of emergency was a while ago. Now it's not. Everything's back to normal on Main Street. If you walk up and down Main Street, it's normal. We need all the parking spaces. All the businesses are open. I can see the city council saying, okay, we will... I can see the city council saying, okay, we will reduce the fee to zero. But the process of approving more than two small tables and two small chairs still needs to go to the planning commission. Why, if you guys can have a, why, if you guys, city council can have a Zoom meeting, why can't the planning commission have a Zoom meeting? That's an honest question. Right? So if you wanted to change the existing ordinance, more than two small tables, two small chairs, and give it to Pierre, why can't you revise the ordinance under normal process? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment from Ruth.
Hi, just something real quick. Hey, Pierre, I wanted to tell you that I really couldn't hear you. You're warbling in and out. I don't have a problem with any of the other speakers. So I'm really not sure what you said, but I think from the la, what the last commenter just said, I think I get the idea of what, the summary of what you said. Is that correct, what he, what he just said about two tables, two chairs?
Well, we'll answer everything at the end of public comment.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
No, no problem.
And then, and then the other thing I wanted to say is I disagree with the last commenter. I mean, no, everything is not back to normal in downtown. I'm a merchant. I am still closed, and there are several of us who are still closed. So, no. We still need support, we need, still need assistance, we need for a variety of reasons. So it's still very active, and I appreciate any help that you can give us to return to our previous vibrant town, and it will take time because COVID-19 is not over. As much as we'd like to dream that it is, it is not, and just look at the numbers. So anyway, just please, I appreciate the help that you guys are giving us very, very much, so please continue. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ruth.
Last call for 12.2. No further comments, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had a couple of items, questions. Pierre, and I know, I mean, the first one is, well, I think there was a question to why. And I think the last caller said it correctly, is that we're not back to normal. And certainly, restaurants are definitely not back to normal because they're still operating under a state order that mandates them to have six feet distance between each person. And so that has reduced their square footage of where they can, how many tables they can actually see in their, in their restaurants. So it, even if there are more people out, what they're operating under is not the same as it was pre-COVID. So this is why we're doing what we're doing tonight. But Pierre, I didn't know if you had any other comments on any of the comments or questions that were brought forward. I think one of them being the, the planning commission, and then there's a couple of other comments in there.
Yes, I can address those, those comments, but even before I get into the comments, I just want to extend my apologies to the council and to the public. If you're having trouble hearing me, I've since moved a little bit closer to the camera and the mic, and I'll try and speak a little bit more loudly. So if anybody having issue hearing me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank, okay, sorry, Ruth. So anyways, the speaker said that the director has the authority to approve up to two, I guess, two tables and two chairs. It's actually, the director has the ability to approve up to two tables and four chairs, no serving of any alcohol. So if there's alcohol or a permanent barrier or more than two tables or four chairs, then it goes to the planning commission. That's under the current code. So the whole idea was, the council gave direction to how do we expedite the ability of restaurants to immediately start using available sidewalk and/or other private walkways or parking lots without going through the long hearing process with the planning commission. You go to the planning commission, it could take at least a month, maybe up to two months to get the hearing. And it's also a considerable amount of expense, and we're trying to eliminate the expense. And so staff would approve it, subject to the conditions that you see that are expressed in the draft permit. So unless there's any issue with the temporary use permit that's before you, we're then going to start handing these out and issuing them immediately as soon as restaurants show that they can comply with a minimum standard. So, and as you said, Mr. Mayor, I think it's extremely important that for the viability for the restaurants, they need additional space because of mainly the physical distancing of the six feet from other patrons.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Councilmember Acuna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Pierre. Thank you for stepping up a little closer. I could hear you very well that time. One of the things, and I, I should have probably contacted staff before, is when we talked about this at a previous meeting, we talked about a sunset date on this, this emergency ordinance. So that it was clear, and I want to say it was December 1st or stage four in the governor's plan, so that people understood that, and that was one of the reasons, just as Mr. Rivas stated, we, we don't want a long, drawn-out process. We want to be able to allow these restaurants to react quickly, do it in an economical manner, and, and I think what he's done this evening certainly comes up to that. But I failed to note that we don't really have an end date on this particular temporary. And I've looked through it a couple of times. Did I, did I miss it, Pierre, or?
Yes, if I may, if you look at, it's the very last paragraph on the last page before we have the date and the signatures. It says, "This permit shall remain effective until, one, no longer needed by the committee. Two, the proclamation of the state of emergency is rescinded."
There it is.
Three, is revoked by the city of Placerville. Revocation may occur as a result of a violation of the Placerville Usable Code or if it's not found in compliance with the permit conditions. And I would just add that should a restaurant, you know, invest in outdoor furniture and actually establishing a temporary outdoor dining area, should they then wish to continue in that use, they would then be able to apply for, under a temporary use permit, under the zoning code. So, and staff was aware that this is something, staff didn't take this lightly, that we're coming to council to just sort of, you know, ad hoc amend our zoning code. So that's why staff put together a very detailed resolution so that it clearly indicates the actions, thought processes that the council took in order to move forward with this process.
My apologies, Pierre. You have exactly got that documented, just as we had, had requested, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Councilmember Taylor?
Well, we had talked about this at the last meeting. We had discussed the need to have these platforms pre-designed or pre-engineered. But looking at the application, it doesn't look like that's the case. Is there something for business owners so that it can just, they can get started on it right out the gate without having to spend a lot of time designing these platforms?
Yeah, that would be a separate, sort of a, kind of an adjunct, but a separate process. That would be, it'd be a no-fee encroachment permit. And I see our, our city engineer Rebecca Neves has now come on board here at the Hollywood Square. So if you, if you direct yourself to section, it's the second paragraph under E. So it basically says, "Should the width of the sidewalk be an inadequate width to provide for the minimum four-foot pathway, the restaurant may make application with the engineering department to install an extension of the sidewalk or boardwalk over the business frontage parking stall. So construction plans shall be submitted with an encroachment permit, subject to review and approval of the city engineer." So with that, I'll leave that end of the process to her. I just will add that this provision allows a restaurant to basically utilize the entire sidewalk when they provide for, build a approved boardwalk that's four feet in width. With that, I'll turn it over to our senior.
Thanks, Pierre. Nicely done.
Oh, the lights are back on.
I know. That was rough. No, I mean, we are looking internally at laying out the said platform or the boardwalk. It's just happens to be an item I haven't had yet a chance to wrap up. But we are looking at, I'm actually drafting it out in AutoCAD, some potential options and, and cross-sections that could be available to business owners. We're, we're trying to do as much as we can to help, you know. They may not have the resources or the time to contact, you know, and get plans made. And so we were trying to come up with a standard plan, if you will, that they could utilize and we could support. So that's still in the works? Yes. Okay. Thanks.
Good question. Yes, Councilmember Acuna?
I'd be happy to go make, go ahead and make a motion to approve item 12.2.
Thank you. All right, we got, I think I got Councilmember Taylor and it, a little bit before Councilmember Borelli. Yep, all right, so any further comments? Seen none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Pierre, Rebecca, thank you for all your work on this. I know this, this was a priority, I think, for the council, to help our, our restaurants in town, to give them a little bit more space. So hopefully, they'll, they'll take advantage of this going forward as well. And again, want to thank staff, cleave everybody for really jumping on this and, and moving it forward, so thank you. Okay, moving on then to item 12.3, defer the consideration of initiating the process to amend the zoning ordinance to consider restrictions on formal, on, excuse me, on formula businesses within the central business district zone to August of 2020. And again, this is Mr. Rivas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you recall, back on December the 10th of last year, the council was considering maybe further regulating the establishment of what's known as a formula business within the central business district. So there was a lot of discussion at that hearing, and that, and at the conclusion of that meeting after public comment, it was recommended then by council that staff would bring it back to you during the month of June. So because of a lot of the different things that have been going on, staff is just recommending that you would defer this item for further consideration to August of, of this year. Hopefully, by then, we would have a more in-person rather than a Zoom meeting. We would think that'd be a live meeting and maybe just more advantageous to have people there in person as opposed to a Zoom.
Thank you, Pierre. Any questions at this time from council? Okay, seen none. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any impact, and I guess either way, on the lawsuit that is going on with Sourdough, where the city is sued over a portion of its ordinance or, I guess, I'm not even going to get into the lawsuit, but is there any impact to that lawsuit in, should we have made that a consideration in making this decision? Or, or consider delaying this until that is, that comes to fruition?
If I might, Councilmember Thomas, probably there isn't, but I say probably because one can never tell what will come up in the process. And potentially, something might be said or done that could affect or have a bearing on that lawsuit. They're moving along on that. They're going to be setting a briefing schedule, I think, at the next hearing, which is probably, I think, about three weeks away. And then they'll also set a date for the hearing. I would prefer that we not take any action on it until such time as that court has decided that the issues in that lawsuit.
So with, with that, John, with what you're saying, does, is August then a sufficient, you know, sort of into the future, or is it more likely that it would be at an even later date?
August is.
I hate to have it come back again in August, just for us to put it off again.
I mean, I'm not sure when the court's going to actually set it, given everything that's going on. But it's pretty much just going to be argument, well, briefing and then argument. But I don't know what the court's going to be like in terms of setting a hearing date, because I suspect, I suspect it's pretty backed up as a result of what's been going on with the COVID-19 issues. So August could be potentially early. September, October would probably be more comfortable. I would say October, definitely.
And we don't know if, I guess, well, I don't even know, i- i- if a demure would be a possibility at, at this point?
No, it's, it's not. I mean, it's, it's at the stage where the parties, the administrative record should be certified at the next court hearing. And that, at that point, the court will set a briefing schedule for the attorneys and then set a date for the argument.
Okay, thank you, John.
With, with that, I would recommend that we defer it until we have a conclusion of that lawsuit. I'm not sure if we're there, not yet, but I would, I would tend to move in that direction.
Sounds like, yes, Councilmember Taylor?
One, one comment. You know, I really wanted to bring this back when we were discussing it before, because there was, at one point, so much public response to this item, that I think whenever we have it, whether it's August or the fall or next year, that we do kind of do a little bit more outreach that this is coming up, because the whole point was to get the public, you know, feedback, so maybe a little bit more time to notice it, know when it's going to be on the agenda, so people can kind of give their input. That being said, in terms of August or after the lawsuit, you know, with just everything that's going on with the economy, I, I would be, I, I mean, I kind of feel like we should just wait and get through the fall and the, the year. I'm just hesitant to throw in another variable to Main Street in terms of, you know, vacancies and people being able to rent their spaces. And, I mean, we just don't know what's going to happen, so. I do want to see this item come back, and I do want the public's input on it, but I'm, I'm definitely open to taking off August 2020 and, and leaving it a little bit more open-ended, based on what the wishes of the council is.
Thank you, councilmember, and you're right. When we talked about this in December, this was pre-COVID. I mean, the world has changed, I mean, literally has changed since, since we, this first came up, so. Your point's well taken. So with that, I think at this point, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.3, and we'll start with Ruth.
Hi, Ruth.
Okay, it'll, it always takes me a minute to unmute.
No problem.
Okay, so before you brought up the whole lawsuit issue, I was going to say, what's the problem with doing it now? Why delay everything else? These other issues are very big issues, and yet you're conducting business by, you know, everyone zooming in. And so as a merchant, I would want us to move forward. It's a big issue for, for many of us. But now you've brought up the lawsuit, so that's your decision. The thing I want to point out, though, at my understanding, and I'm not a party of the lawsuit, all right, I'm not a party, but I, I really thought the lawsuit was about fast food. We seem to interchange fast food and formula. Formula, there's plenty, form, formula is five or more businesses, and we have plenty of those on Main Street. We have a bank, we have dry cleaners, we have pharmacies, we have hardware stores that are part of something that is more than five in a chain. This was about fast food and putting fast food on Main Street, in this area of Main Street, in that chart that said no, but then it was supposed, and blah, blah, blah. You know, as a supposed typo, although it's a 30-year-old document that had been reviewed twice. So I just want to make sure that when you say, "Don't do it because of the lawsuit", the lawsuit, I don't really think is about formula. You can correct me. I thought the lawsuit was about fast food. So, and that's my whole, whole comment, and maybe legal, your legal counsel can tell me. So that's my whole, whole comment, and maybe legal, your legal counsel can tell me or not. But I, I think we're mixing two things. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
I'm taking public comment from Kirk.
Hey, Kirk.
Yeah, the question I have is, this is one of those subjects that raises lots of controversy, issues about the historic character of Main Street, things of that kind. So the question is to find out what the people really think. Why not put this on the ballot for November as an initiative and see what people think? Likewise, the issue has come up before about whether Main Street Placerville should be another historic district. And ask the voters, that's the next item you've got on your calendar is putting a ballot measure there regarding the treasurer. So we're going to have one measure, why not have a couple more? Wouldn't that be efficient? And would it be helpful to find out what the public thinks about something as simple as this and important as this?
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
Call-in user four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I agree with the previous caller. Put this to a vote. What do the businesses on that special strip of old Main Street, what do they want to see down there? And not just the businesses, we're talking about the, the voters. Because we're a working town, right? People come and go, dry cleaners, banks, everything else. Put it to the voters, say, what do you want to see? I, I don't know if a petition put to the voters can have like, choose A, B, or C with different levels of what would you like to see? I kind of like the ordinance as written. Anything over five has to go to Special Planning Commission review. We, we would all freak out if what used to be Centro became McDonald's. And they went full-blown with their corporate architecture. We would all freak out, right? Plenty of cities have the planning ability to force a corporation to come down to Main Street, subway, you name it, and meld and architecturally blend with the historic district, which it isn't. So that's the other thing. I request that the city create Main Street as a historic district as recommended by your advisory committee from like 2012 or something like that. Lots of grant money ability in there. The deferral of this discussion is interesting. I've always been wary of governments trying to postpone things into the December Christmas time, into the New Year's time, and I can smell exactly what's trying to happen. They're trying to get the least public input possible when everyone's busy with family visiting and yada, yada. So if you're trying to push it this into the Christmas, New Year's time to reduce public input, shame on you. So there might be more than one person at the city that deserve the remotes. That's all. Bye.
Last call for item 12.3. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that's all.
Okay, thank you. Public comments closed, and I saw Councilmember Taylor with her hand up.
So I, I also like the idea of putting something like this on the ballot. And while we're at it, we could also put on the Hangtown sign and let the voters vote on that. But I believe we're coming up to deadline, so I was just wondering if we could kind of learn more about what the logistics of actually getting ballot measures on would be.
It's my understanding that, and Regina, correct me if I'm wrong, the county has asked us to get the ballot measure to them prior to the next council meeting. So we wouldn't have time to bring that to the council, get approval, and get it out to the county by their deadline.
That is correct. The deadline is July 1st.
Yeah, and I just, I would say this too, the issues that are being brought up are going to make it not tricky, but more difficult to write the ballot measure and the ballot question. Because when you start talking about options and different things, it's going to get more confusing. And you have to, you want to write a ballot question so that the electorate is not confused and they understand what you're trying to do. So it's, it's not going to be an easy thing to do. It's going to take a little bit of time, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
And then actually just one more comment in regards to, to the last speaker. You know, we, we had this ballot, or we had this on the agenda back in December, and we got very little turnout, which is why we decided to bring it back, because we wanted to have more public input. But he did remind me that doing it around the holidays, because I believe that's what happened last time, and why we decided to put it towards June. So I do agree with him that doing it around the holidays is not, you know, if, if it's going to be October, or if it's going to be March. But, but not around the holidays, because that is a time that we get very little feedback, so.
Vice Mayor.
I, I do believe if you're going to start throwing out accusations like that, you should actually name the person you're thinking of, because as far as I know, I can't think of anybody on this council that, that seeks to diminish the input of our community. Matter of fact, I know that we have all sought and often seek to get enough input or as much input as we can on issues. And sometimes it's a struggle to get people to actually show up unless they show up at the last minute and, and, and get upset because we didn't inform them. So you know what? I, that upsets me too when people say that, because we make quite a bit of an effort to get the word out on these, on these issues. So I, I don't, I don't buy it. I, I think that's a little hooey. And I, whatever that is, I don't know. But I, but I, I definitely disagree with that comment, and I'm slightly offended by it, actually. So with that said, you know, I think this is a discussion that we need to have through the council and, and talk about what it looks like and and not rush to the idea of having, you know, because I really don't think we want to start running our city, city by major on the ballot. Anytime a challenging issue comes up that we could have, because most often we can have significant community input and, and make decisions at this level. And, and get a good read for one, what our community wants, and, and that's what we're elected to do. So there's some issues that are bigger than that, and you know, those are discussions that we need to have and not rush to put it on a ballot. For now, we're gonna, we're gonna defer, and I, I still hold my recommendation with it to at least bring it back after this lawsuit is over and determine what the best time is after that.
Okay, Patty, did you want to?
I, I just want to agree with that. Those are things that I was going to say too. I really think we should, we need to wait till this lawsuit is over. And, and I also agree that we, we can't put every decision that we were elected to have. I mean, people have some confidence in us to make some decisions, and we can't, because we're afraid to step on somebody's toes or something, you know. It's like, I think we give plenty of time for people to respond, and we can't, we can't rule by, by putting everything on the ballot. I mean, we just can't make a ballot measure out of every decision that there is to be made. We, well, like I said, we give plenty of time for public comment. There's, I, I don't care what anybody says. We, we are meetings. It's, it's, if people are really interested, they're going to find out, so. And no matter what time of the year it is or anything else, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I would agree. I mean, I think we need to wait until after the lawsuit. So I don't know that we have to even put a date on it. If we just say till we have better clarity on the lawsuit, then this will come back as a, as an item. Uh, and if it happens to be in December, I'm perfectly happy to hold that over. If we think we won't get enough people that will chime in, but that gives staff, I think, some operating room and I, because I'm almost positive August will be, will be here in a nanosecond, and we won't, we still won't be ready to have this conversation yet.
Mayor, if I could comment on that too. So yeah, what I would propose is that, you know, we take that direction to do it after the lawsuit. What we would do then do is come back to you to set a date after that time. We wouldn't just set ourselves, we'll come back and ask for what date you would like to set that on. And I, but I also wanted to comment on similar to what Councilmember Tom, or Vice Mayor Thomas mentioned, the previous caller about wanting to fire some of our staff for some recommendation. I, I didn't hear any recommendation from staff to hold this over to December. In fact, our recommendation was August, so. Needs to get the facts straight and, and what they're stating, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Uh, so with that, anyone like to?
I'll make a motion to, to delay consideration of the Central Business District review until after the lawsuit is concluded at the Centro. What's the name of it?
Sourdough.
Sourdough, thank you. How could I forget? Sourdough.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further comments? See none? Roll call, please.
Mayor Suragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Hey, that measure passes. Five oh. Thank you, everybody. Uh, we'll move on then to item 12.4, adopt a resolution placing a measure on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot proposing the city treasurer position be changed from an elected position to an appointed position. And Mr. Warren has this for us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep my comment brief. At your June 9th meeting, we presented the concept of a ballot measure to change the city treasurer position to an elect, from an elected position to an appointed one. City council provided input to staff and asked that it be returned to you with a ballot measure for consideration and placement on the November 3rd election. As a recap, California government code requires that cities either have a city treasurer that is elected or appointed. Historically, California cities have moved from an elected treasurer to an appointed one. More than two-thirds of California cities have made this move to appointed staff. The trend for newly incorporated cities has been established, has established these positions as appointed rather than elected in recognition of the technical training needed to perform the job and the need to seek more qualified applicants. The Office of City Treasurer was established in the early years of our city municipal organization. As California cities have grown and government has become more complex, the duties of this position have increased. The treasurer functions are complex and increasingly technical. Effective financial management now requires professional skills, expertise in areas such as electronic banking, fund accounting, governmental reporting requirements, investment regulation, and debt management. Today, professional staff, independent auditors, establish internal controls, as mentioned by your auditor earlier this evening, provide the necessary oversight and controls for the city's finances to be properly managed. The position of city treasurer was established implacable as an elected position over 100 years ago and only can be changed to an appointed position by the vote of the citizenry. The only requirement is to run for elected city treasurer is that the candidate be 18 years old, registered to vote, and a resident within the city limits. There is no guarantee that elected treasurer would have the requisite skills to carry out the requirements of the position. Conversely, an appointed city treasurer would be subject to normal personnel procedures, including competitive recruitment, process, annual performance evaluations, and possible termination of unsatisfactory job performance. Appointment of this position would ensure the citizens of our community that proper consideration be given to qualification, education, experience, and a candidate selected to fill these positions rather than part of successful campaigning. In the case of the current incumbent, Kathy Trumbly, who also holds an appointed, appointed position of accounting supervisor within the city, a position that required her to be appointed based on her education, appointed position as a public employee. Government code allows for a stipend to be paid to the elected position of city treasurer, which is currently $182 per month. The treasurer position is not a political position. There is no policymaking responsibilities, and the treasurer performs the duties with the citizenry of our community while remaining apolitical and neutral. At its meeting held on June, June 9th, you discussed this item, and we already talked about that. As of 2006, this is dated information, but even back then, of the 478 cities, incorporated cities in California, 285 or 60% have appointed treasurers. The city treasurer is a ministerial office. Those duties are regulated by statute, resolution, and ordinance. This position is part-time, and most duties performed by, most duties performed in the finance department are done by full-time staff. In recent years, these duties have become more consuming and difficult as government accounting standards have become more complex and large projects that involve state and local monies require specialized record-keeping and responsibility. The Assistant City Manager Director of Finance, in conjunction with the city's professional staff, prepared the annual budget that is reviewed and discussed in public workshops and several council meetings prior adoption. Many of your budget reviews are presented to the council meetings in order to inform the citizenry and of the city's financial health. Manded audits are conducted by outside firms specializing in governmental accounting procedures and results of audits presented through council meetings. The city's finance staff possesses the necessary financial education experience to perform the required duties of the finance department and maintain federal legislative government accounting standards. So the balance between our existing treasurer and experienced staff provides the necessary oversight to achieve the, the needs of the elected treasurer and to guarantee that the candidates for position possess the necessary qualification. The appointed city treasurer, however, would be selected based on education, investment, and experience, as we discussed earlier. The council's direct staff to pursue measure, excuse me. If the council direct staff to pursue the measure, the attached resolution of intention and requesting of an election stating the ballot question would be, if approved, would be forwarded to the Elrata County Office of Elections. A draft ballot argument in favor of the appointed treasurer is also attached for the council's consideration. An impartial analysis of argument in favor and ballot measure would be prepared and finalized later this summer. Now I'll hand it over to City Attorney Driscoll to kind of talk about the legal aspects of this ballot measure.
Thanks, Dave. As I indicated at the last meeting, the position is obviously for election at the next general election in November. So the appointed measure, if it were to pass, would not normally become effective until the next general election in 2024. There is a way that the position could become appointed in the interim, and that's what stated in the ballot question. If there became a vacancy in the Office of Treasurer, then the voters would have said by voting on that issue that yes, they want to, if there is a vacancy, they want the city council to be able to appoint to fill that. Unless the voters vote on that aspect of it, then really what will happen is the position would become appointed in 2024 and would default to existing state law if there was a vacancy between. the time when the person was elected in November and installed and the 2024 election. And the state law there says that if the vacancy occurs during the first half of the term and there's 130 days left before the general election, the council can appoint. But that person who is appointed or somebody had, there has to be an election at that midterm, if you will, that election in two years. There has to be an election then. If the vacancy occurs after the end of the first half of the term, that is, in the second half of the term, then the council can appoint and they fill out the rest of that term till 2024. I don't know if there's anything I can add to that, so, but if there's questions about that, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, John. So any questions for staff at this point? I guess Vice Mayor Thomas.
Well, one of the, one of the purposes of having this, this position in my, my, what I gather is having this position being elected is that they're accountable to the people that elected, you know, just like we are at the city council. So how do we ensure not only the public, but now the city council who's responsible, who, you know, now becomes responsible for assuming that accountability? How do we ensure that the council is being, has, I don't know if the power is the right word, but the information and the line of of communication is open there? Do you get where I'm going with this, that, so that we, we have the ability to, to work directly with this person as opposed to going through a bunch of, who are they accountable to and how's that decision tree? Because I think that while we trust everybody here and I, I absolutely trust people and I, and one of the things we, we assume this Trumbly is doing is protecting the interest of the, of our, of our assets that has helped for the community. So how does this translate into now a hired position? And how does that accountability still stay that, you know, the people's money is truly?
That's a great question. And it, the answer is it depends on what you decide. So if it became, if, if this is placed on the ballot, the voters voted yes to make it appointed and you're in a position to where you actually appoint someone, there would be a job description and there would be, you know, we would have our organizational chart. This position has been, they report directly to the people. Being it would be an appointed position, they would report either directly to the city manager, the city council. I would say you would have more oversight if they reported directly to the city council. And then, you know, with input from the city manager, of course, because the city, we have a council manager form of government. So the city manager essentially is running the city day to day. But to have oversight, the treasurer acts as a controller. So every dollar that's received and expended, they're monitoring and approving. So I think it's important that they report to the highest level. In this case, as an appointed position, it would be to the council, but I would leave that to the council and the city manager to make that decision. And any input that Cleve and Mr. Moore, excuse me, and Mr. Driscoll have in regards to that. Love to hear, so.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add to that, just, I'll make it quick. I might would strongly recommend that that position, report to the city council, be appointed by the council, report to the council, similar to the aspect of the city attorney currently. So to me, it's not really even a question unless somebody has a big question about it. My position would be that they report to the city council.
And is there a, what is the diff cost differential going from the selected position to than a hired position?
There's no real cost differential that we assumed. There's, you know, we're in the midst of our budget development process. And this is one of the, the appointed position of the city treasurer, we're looking at that. And there may be some changes there, but that's more non-treasury work. But the day-to-day cash management, depositing, cash deposits with our bank, reviewing and approving the check register, that would all be maintained. The compensation hasn't been changed. My first stint with the city was in 1994 and it was the same amount. So that's something the city council may want to look at in the future, but for right now, we're not recommending any changes to the stipend of $182 a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this moment? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open up public comment.
The comment is now open for item 12.4. Call in user four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so we're discussing a very technical position going to the vote of the people that it become a, an appointed position by electeds. Right? Recommended, city manager will make a recommendation, here's your list of people. City council will choose those people. So if I have low confidence in the city council as sitting members of my government, why should I then trust who they choose to appoint for treasurer? I would like to see, if they're talking ballot initiatives, I would like to see the city manager become an elected position in check against the city council. I would like to see possibly the city engineer and the director of, I could see all kinds of positions that should be elected that require no real technical expertise. Finances, yes. But when you decide that you want to go outside the project boundaries and approve a driveway that destroys cultural resources, somebody is showing incompetence at that point. So when they're an elected position, the people can fire them at the next election, right? That's what my, that's where I'm going with this. I would like to see a whole bunch of the non-elected positions at the city be elected positions.
One minute.
So the people, so the people can have a say when they make a mistake, they can be fired. That's my comment. Thank you. You?
Last call for item 12.4.
Yeah.
No further comments, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you.
I just, I have a real quick comment. Dave, you were saying that, that this position, that they're, that, that this position has added jobs part, as part, so, and their $182 a month is not very much. How much more have you added to, you know, their hours that they've? To the, isn't it seven hours a month that they, that there's required to work or something? And, and, and you were saying that you have added more to their job. What does that mean? In the way of compensation?
Yeah, good question. So Ms. Trumbly serves as an appointed accounting supervisor, part-time. And she works approximately seven hours a week doing other duties. For example, she is the unofficial purchasing agent of the city. She helps, you know, pricing and volume ordering, for example, paper, so on and so forth. There's other duties that she performs regarding, for example, our TOT tax. She manages our transient occupancy tax program, the receipt of those, those taxes. So there's things that she's doing outside of the treasurer role that she's compensated for, but not much. The hourly rate's $22.26. But we are looking at, within the finance department, our overall resources to see, you know, it's an opportunity to relook at things and we're also looking outside the, for example, the purchasing. We're actually looking at possibly decentralizing some of that. So anyway, but the primary, the primary duties of the treasurer position is really as a controller to ensure mostly the controlling of cash going out, but also going in. And in today's world, I want to emphasize the threat of fraud on the outside is much higher than it used to be. And we've actually caught fraud internally, thanks to Ms. Trumbly. So, and what I mean by that is attempts from the outside through electronic transactions, she's actually caught that. And not everybody has those abilities. It's important that we get somebody that is, and I'm not saying that's not possible through the electoral process, but when it's on a What's that?
Highly unlikely.
So anyway, those are my, those are my comments.
Okay.
Any other questions or Patty, you got another?
I, I'm just thinking that if we don't offer, it, okay, to get, we're talking about how we need somebody that really knows their stuff. So if we don't offer a compensation, how much, how are we going to get the caliber that we need that you're saying?
We're looking at that and I just want to say that you have talent within the finance department where somebody could be appointed within the finance department to do some, do the treasury duties. But that would be, that would be something what I would, if this were approved by the voters is to do a recruitment and you would find out yourself, you know, the council could appoint a committee of the council to do the interviews and you can make that decision yourself as to whether or not the person's, you know, if the person is within the finance department or outside the finance department. But there's different opportunities. Now, it may turn out, depending on what happens, that you will need to revisit the compensation because I, it's miserably low.
Okay.
Councilmember Taylor.
I have a comment just in terms of the wording of the ballot question. I think the wording is a little awkward and might be hard to read for the general public, especially in regards to the, on the first line of it, made upon the earlier of one, the expiration of the term of office, et cetera. I don't know if there's a way just to make it a little bit smoother, a read, a little bit clearer for the public.
I would love to hear your suggestions.
Well, I was thinking, instead of getting rid of the, upon the earlier of and changing to say something like, shall the Office of the City Treasurer be appointed with the first appointment to be made upon the expiration of the term of office of the person elected in the next general election or the office becoming bacon, whichever comes first, something like that.
That would work. Again, can I get you to repeat that one more time?
Shall the Office of City Treasurer be appointed with the first appointment to be made upon the expiration of the term of office of the person elected to serve as city treasurer at the November 3rd, 2020 general meaning is poll election? Or the Office of the City Treasurer becoming bacon, whichever comes first?
Whichever occurs first?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So is that a, that a motion, council member?
Sure.
I had a question.
Yes.
I had the same concern with that wording, Kara. Very cumbersome when somebody isn't paying a lot of attention. I, I talked to Cleve about it and he assured me that an attorney had written it.
It sounded like an attorney had written it.
Little Roman numerals and all kinds of strange things. I wanted to simplify it even more, but I don't know if you're allowed to, because the question mark is all the way at the end. And, and in thinking about voters being in a hurry and who knows what kind of a disease we'll be fighting in November, I thought, well, this is, this is the long way around the barn. Yeah, shall the city treasurer be appointed with the first appointed question? Did we throw a question mark there, Mr. Driscoll?
Sure you can, but that's, that's what the voters are voting on. They're not voting on when that appointment will be.
Right, and then have a further, have that further clarification as a sentence, as a simplified sentence, second sentence, it's getting late.
Well, yeah, you can have, you can do that. But again, the voters would only be voting on that portion.
All right, so, okay, I got you.
But that's the question mark.
Yep.
Okay, so what it means is that, as I said earlier, the issue of, let's say, somebody vacating the office in the first half of their term with at least 130 days, that's probably going to go to an election.
Election, right, yep. Thank you.
That's the risky run with that.
That's why you're an attorney and I'm not. I had another question, I looked in here and this is a bigger concern of mine and I did, pardon me, I hope I'm not doing this wrong again. I didn't notice in here where we said that if this is successful, this, this, in the future, the city treasurer will report to the council and will be appointed.
Well, the codes, the code section, if you change to appointed, says that the person is appointed by the council.
And then
Council, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, and then who does that, yeah, we would pick a treasurer, but then who does that treasurer report to?
That could be put to, something you would put in your job description.
Because I could see, you know, we come and go and I can think back before your time, Mr. Driscoll, well, even maybe during your time, there were a lot of entertaining folks that were on the city council. And I would, I wouldn't want them to be my boss, some of them. Life could have been made very hellish for, for a city treasurer, some of the politics that have gone on. And that would be why, and I was surprised if Mr. Morris said, oh yeah, they wouldn't report to me. And I'm thinking that's exactly who a city treasurer should report to. Maybe up there in the food chain next to Mr. Warren, but to have a city treasurer subject to the plums of an elected body? Whoa, what a job title. How do you guys feel about that?
I agree with you, Mark. I think it should be report to, to city manager.
That's a decision.
I would be fine with that as long as, but I would go back to, I think it should be appointed and removed by the city council.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, but they would, on their weekly daily activities, they would be, you don't want the whims of some political body trying to get rid of somebody and that could be very, you could lose, you could very much lose the watchdog aspect of this position that is very, very important to have, that oversight.
Good catch there, Councilmember Akuna. I agree with that.
So, so I guess with that, with that, if that's necessary to make that a part of the motion, I would. And then I would go ahead and with the wording that Kara had suggested, go ahead and make the motion and approve 12.4 with wording in the, in the actual ballot measure and that this position will be And that this position will be appointed by the city council, but will report to the city manager.
Are you good with a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Mark, are you saying that in the ballot measure?
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure that we, we understood that.
Okay, so as, as, as presented by Kara, without any additions, that's what, that's what we're agreed to, okay.
Let me ask Mr. Morris Driscoll, do we need to do anything to clarify who this position would report to in the future?
You don't have to do that tonight. Yeah, I mean, all you're need to do tonight is approve the question for the ballot.
Thank you, good question, Dennis, thank you. So that would be my motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, do we have any further comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, Ms. O'Connell, roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Hey. If the council is okay with this, I'd like to actually move up item fifteen. Since it's so late and do the verbal reports on the Lower Main Street Slurry Seal Project. Everyone okay with that? I've seen nodding heads. Okay, so with that, so we'll move to item fifteen, which are city manager and staff reports. Item fifteen point one, Lower Main Street Slurry Seal Project, and this is Mr. Stone.
Good evening, Mayor Saragosa, I'd like to give you an update on the status of the Lower Main Street Project. This project included a section of Highway forty-nine maintained by Caltrans, city staff was able to coordinate. With Caltrans maintenance staff, and I'm happy to report that both of us have completed our crack ceilings, our sections of the project area. After further discussion with Caltrans, it was determined that a type-two slurry would be required instead of a seal coating for the remaining Caltrans. Section of the project. Due to the change required with Caltrans section, city staff decided to explore the option of type-two slurry and thermal paint for the entire project. Based on this, staff decided it'd be necessary to rebid the portion of work that is not yet started. Notice to bidders was released last Thursday via the Mountain Democrat and emailed to several contractors. Bids are due on July second, and I propose the contract being awarded July fourteenth to the council meeting. I'd also anticipate the project to be scheduled for completion shortly after. The contract is awarded to take advantage of the warm weather necessary for the application of the type-two slurry, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Stone, any questions?
Mayor and council, if I could just, just one update to that also, I, I think maybe you all know this, but. Caltrans has agreed to fund all of that portion that is theirs. Question when we first came back, and they have agreed to fund that, actually a little bit more than what they originally were going to do, I believe.
Great. Okay, any questions on that?
When's it gonna happen?
Hopefully shortly after the contract gets awarded, the, the bids close on the second, and then right after that, I'm hoping to have the staff report. Ready for the July fourteenth meeting and then scheduling the construction shortly after that, so we'd like to get it done this summer while it's still warm.
Yeah, great.
Any other comments? All right, I'll open that up for any public comment.
Public comments now open for fifteen point one, we'll start with Colin User.
Good evening, council, so, understanding what you just discussed, you just changed. The agenda format and moved things around without a formal vote to shift the agenda. I hate to be a stickler on how things work. But you adopted the agenda with things in a certain order. You just changed the agenda item format, moved something forward. And I only heard two voices saying. Sure, let's do this. So what I need to hear is. So I don't freak out. That you put it to a vote saying, let's move an agenda item forward. Let's hear all the votes from the council members. Moving an agenda item out of sequence from the previously adopted agenda. And can anyone disagree with me? I'm looking for consistency with previously adopted procedures. And then I can accept your discussions and your process. That's my question, thank you.
Last call for item twelve point four. No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. John, were you gonna say something? I'm not asking you to.
Mayor, if you'd like to, I can respond to that.
Sure.
Or John, if you want, either way, my comment is just going to be that it has not been uncommon for council many times. To request that an item be moved up and, and accept that by consensus without a formal vote, I've seen that done.
That's exactly what I was going to say, mayor, you have the prerogative to do that with the concurrence of the council, you don't have to go through a formal vote for that.
Yep, thank you, and I knew that, I just wanted to put that on the record.
All right, let's move on.
Yeah, I saw head shaking, and I would have been the first to do something different if I hadn't.
If I could say something, if, if you, if you, most people haven't noticed, if you look at the panelists that are here. There is a long list of city employees that are participating in this meeting, for which we would like to move it forward. And I could go down, you know, our, our fire chief, head of parks, our, our city engineer. We've got our, our police chief, we've got a lot of people here that are sitting in on this meeting, so moving forward, not dealing with the silliness would be great. But I do, I want to acknowledge and recognize, because they're hidden in the background, they're not sitting in front of us. And I truly appreciate every one of them staying involved and, and paying attention to what's going on, be available for us at, at this meeting.
Well said, Vice Mayor, and with that, and I know Chief Cordero, we always welcome you and glad you're sticking it out with us. If there's anything under this item on staff reports that you wanted to bring up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, chief. It's good to have. It's like a cameo.
Yeah, well, that's great, I'll go ahead and thank Mr. Stone for his continued efforts in this project and working with Caltrans. We've said this often, they can be a challenging organization, and our staff does a great job in working regionally with them. And this will look very nice because of the coordinated effort between the two agencies. This whole street's gonna look nice and new, and that is a real plus, so I'll move approval of the item. Or else, yeah, do we need approval of that? No, this was just an update, I'll approve again.
It's eleven oh five, so.
Come back and see me on the fourteenth of July, Mr. Stone, and we'll talk.
All right. Yes, is there any other staff reports this evening?
None, none this evening, mayor.
Okay, so we'll go back then up to item thirteen, with your council reports from other agencies, and. I'll ask everyone to be very brief on these, Eldorado County Transit Authority. Okay, easy enough, Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
We meet in a next week.
We didn't meet.
All right, LAFCO.
Oh, LAFCO this month.
Perfect, SECOG, we essentially just had an update on Green Means Go from our lobbyist. They're trying to now lobby the governor's. Covid nineteen economic. Committee that's been put together to try to get our Green Means Go funds adopted by that group. As it means to spuring the economy going forward, so that was sort of the main discussion item at SECOG for this month. Placerville Fire, Fire Safe Council.
Fire Safe Council met and had really good discussions. We welcomed a new member, Carl Collins, and they elected officers. And most of them were returning, the folks that were already there, that are, they're all doing a great job. Talked about the outreach to the community, we're gonna start staffing a table at the Saturday Farmer's Market, and. They're going to send out a mass mailing brochure, brochures to the city, and that should be done. Fairly soon, advising folks what to do and how to do it and who to get in touch with. They also, our chair, Chris. Had received training along with Pierre Rivas and in property evaluations. And they are going to put it on Facebook so that if folks have any questions or anything, they can get in touch with. Her through them, and she just, she just wanted to stress that this is just evaluation, this is not inspections. And they. I think that was, that was the, all the most important things, and just a reminder, fire season is upon us, and it's just really. You know, it's, it's, they want to emphasize that how important it is that people really pay attention and work together and. You know, try to prevent having any kind of fire here, so. They're doing a great job.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, so that's item thirteen, we'll move on to item fourteen, requests for future agenda items. Anybody have an item they want to request? All right, seen, oh, I guess, councilmember Taylor.
You know, given all the comments about the hang down sign, is this something that we want to bring back to council at a later date? When we can have the public in the chambers and hear the debate on that. Make a determination, or is there another way that this is in the works to be addressed?
Yeah, so it's good. Late, it's late, I'm losing my earpiece here, yeah, no, it's a good question, councilmember, so we've. We've initiated, and I guess we have to schedule our, our next meeting, but a series of rounds, we're gonna do a sort of a series of community talks. To have more input on this item, so that at one point, it would eventually come to us in a more. Official capacity, you know, should we want to take some sort of action, so. That process is starting. And it will have been, I think, I can't say for sure, but I think it will eventually come back here. To the city council, but we are sort of taking these incremental steps to. Have the chance for the community to weigh in in, in smaller venues where we can have, you know, some real dialogue that happens. So that's, that's just sort of started, so all of the council will have an opportunity to participate in those, in those processes as well.
Okay.
And I don't know, Cleve, if you wanted to add anything there, or Vice Mayor Thomas, if I missed anything, I know it's late, so my mind might not all be. Completely clear at this point.
From my perspective, no, I think that was, that's, that's the conversation we had with the Elrod progressives. And I think they're interested in doing that as well, they feel. An education and communication process more than. This, bringing it back to the council at this point, I think that, that has, I think that's the first step.
Okay, and then in these committee chats. The rest of the council will be involved, or the public will know about them, be scheduled?
Those are still, I mean, we don't, in our conversations, we're not there yet to, to know exactly what those.
The council, I mean, Kara, for, for us, the council would definitely, you'll have the ability to participate in these.
Yeah, I think the, the difficult thing going forward, when you talk about these chats and the, as an education and a, and a dialogue and communication. For the larger group that we're talking about these chats is the difficulty we have with covid nineteen right now and how to actually do those. And so I think the idea that I got is that we would continue to do some smaller group meetings. And I'm, I'm open to, you know, including council in whatever method possible, obviously. It's difficult because of the Brown Act to include all of you in that, but maybe if the mayor and vice mayor are open to it, maybe we. Rotate council members through some of those, if, those that are interested in being part of those or something, but.
I, I think that's a good idea, I mean, it gives everybody a chance to have the context of what people are saying. As well as the opposite side of that is hearing from us as well.
So, one other issue, we, there was a couple of things we talked about bringing forward, one of them was the city logo.
Right.
And the other was the statement from the, from the city.
That's right.
Will, and we will work on both of those items for you.
And what about the nooses on city street signs?
We, we'll look at that as part of the, the, the noose on the logo, we'll look at all of that together.
Councilmember Acuna.
Was there a need to bring that back as a future agenda item, or can the city manager, based on, with his basic authority? Just from the consent of the council, start that work to replace the penguin tree news with the bell tower. On signs, stationary business cards. So we don't spend anymore, you know, we could, we could lose quite a little bit of time.
No, I, I, I think that I've got authority that I can, I can move on that, finalizing it, what would come back to you would be the final product.
Oh, okay.
Rather than come back and have you tell me, proceed with it now, I will proceed with it and bring back what will be recommended final product.
So, in the conversation, I actually suggested that we remove the tree and the noose. And for expediencing, that can be done and keep the logo. Very much intact as is with the, with the river and the miner and, and that lights. And not look, so I think developing a whole new logo would, would provide, would require more input, in my humble opinion.
Understand, and we'll look at it from that perspective, and anyway, yes, we can look at that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Borelli.
I just want to remind everybody that. Old Town Grill is doing one of his fundraising dinners Friday night, and this one is to help, they're partnering with More Workshop. And just remind everybody to go down there and get your dinner Friday night.
Put your orders in, good, good call, good catch, Patty, that was one I meant to say myself, so thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One last question for Cleve, are we having, are we having a second meeting in July?
Traditionally, we have canceled, or, excuse me, or gone dark, that second meeting in July. That is our plan right now, unless there is something that arises that says we need to, need to meet.
I just, I didn't remember that we canceled it, and it seems like we'd do it sooner than, we would like done it tonight, to cancel the second meeting, did we?
I, I know it's been scheduled to cancel it. Yeah, yeah, I'm guessing that's, that's on your next agenda, to cancel that, so.
Usually it's a little longer lead time, but that's fine, that, that's why I was questioning it, thank you.
I don't think any of us are going anywhere, Mark.
Well, yeah, I just seem like we should have maybe done it tonight, thirty days' notice.
I know, I'm just kidding you.
Good, good catch, a councilmember. Any other comments under future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to upcoming items, and, and timely, we will make sure that's added to the next council meeting. For that dark, second meeting in July. Then we have a spring mosquito CM amendment with R E Y, replacement of. Replacement of body worn cameras, water reclamation facility effluent flow meters, some of the items uh for upcoming meetings. And uh with that, um at the early hour of eleven sixteen P M. Uh I will adjourn uh tonight's meeting of the Placerville City Council, so thank you, everybody. Uh especially all the staff that stuck through this entire meeting, uh thank you, appreciate it, good night.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.